Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, April 6th at 6:00 PM. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and supporting documentation in the little plastic bins on the wall by the door where you came in. Help yourself to that information. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28 and this session will be rebroadcast on Friday at noon on Channel 28. And we are being recorded live, uh, we are streaming live on the Internet on our website. So if you want to check us out on the Internet, this session will be preserved on the Internet for all time. And, uh, just one more little item of housekeeping before we get started. If you have cell phones and pagers, we would appreciate it if you could turn them off or set them to vibrate so that we are not disturbed during these, uh, this council meeting. May we ha- wait. Close session. Oh, that item is being moved. May we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Chilton.
Here.
Councilmember Mueller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Mayor Sossarman.
Here.
Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any circumstance, law, or order.
Thank you. Item six, closed session report. There was no closed session last time. I don't believe so. Uh, there's nothing to report. Uh, item seven, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Mayor and council, I'd like to request that we move item 11. I had item 10 to facilitate. That was got no need for 18. They also need to make Calistoga's council meeting tonight.
And my agenda shows that item two, closed session, will be moved to follow item 17. Are there any other changes or corrections?
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to pull item 9E for discussion on the consent.
We'll, we'll get there. This is just the agenda.
I'll go to the whole agenda.
Any more changes or corrections to the agenda this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended by the town manager.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Carla Reiff, R-E-Y-F-F, two F's and two Franks, and I would like to briefly comment on two things. The first thing I would like to talk about is the $1,000 grant that you usually offer and that we usually request as the Friends of the Library for the summer reading program. We will not be requesting it this year. We have managed during this time when the library was in transition to save enough money that we'll be paying for that grant ourselves. So you will have that money to spend on someone else because I know a lot of people are short and it'll make your job a little easier, hopefully. So, but we might be back next year. The second item I wanted to talk about, or the issue I want to talk about, was my birthday party. I had the best birthday party of my life this year. What happened was I had all my grandchildren, I have 10 grandchildren, nine boys and one girl, and children, and our family came to my house and the Yountville Shuttle picked us up on a Sunday afternoon at 12:30. And we got on the Yountville Shuttle. We even used the handicapped wheelchair part and drove around town. They sang "Happy Birthday" to me and let us off at the community hall, or the new community center, where we went in and we had a family basketball game. We played for three quarters. I was the referee and, uh, it was fantastic. It was really a wonderful, wonderful party and a wonderful use of the town of Yountville and its facilities for the public. There were two other children that were playing there when we arrived and we managed to even incorporate them into our game because we didn't want them to feel left out. So it worked well and, um, everyone was pleased, everyone had a good time. The only disappointing matter, as far as I was concerned, was the $5 charge for, um, to play in the court. Was not a problem for me. I could afford it. But I could see other people might not be able to take advantage of this facility unless this sort of issue is straightened out somehow. So, any questions? That's my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and happy birthday. Anyone else? Public comment? Any matter that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll close public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. Councilmember Mueller, you wish to pull item?
9E for discussion.
Okay. Are there any other changes or corrections to tonight's consent calendar? I will be abstaining from voting on the, uh, item 9A approval of warrants.
I'll move for adoption of a consent calendar, items A, excuse me, B, C, D, and F.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion carries. As I stated, I will abstain from item, uh, 9A. So we need somebody to move and approve that.
I move and approve, I move that we approve, uh, consent calendar, item 9A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Item 9E, Councilmember Mueller?
Um, I just wanted to, um, state that I have, um, I am fine with this item as it refers to, um, fees for special events, photography and filming, and amplified sound. However, uh, I'm opposed to charging our residents for block parties. I know they're allowed one free, but, uh, it just doesn't seem to be in anybody's benefit. We have to, we're going to charge them for, um, block parties. We're going to be using staff time that we can't reimburse 100% if, um, they get in their request early. It just seems, um, you know, contradictory to what we're trying to do in town and what a lot of people like to get together and have fun. So, um, I'm, would just like to pull that. I know we get one free, but sometimes people have two in one year and then they have years where they don't have any. So, uh, I just think it's a burden we don't need to place in our community.
Is there any discussion on that? Anyone wishing to comment?
Ask a question.
Councilmember Chilton?
Can, can you define what, tell us the definition of what a block party is?
A block party is typically a organized activity where the neighbors come together and they're somewhat organized and they request a complete street closure. And there is a considerable cost because we do have to come out, block it off, process. Um, we, to, I'm trying to think, we went through and analyzed the last several years and we did not have any situations where a block had more than one. And I mean, this is certainly something that, it's well within the council's purview, but again, we're trying to, to look and bring forward. So you're going to see more discussion items like you've asked us to bring. So it's really a discretion on the council as far as what they would like to do.
If, you know, a bunch of neighbors get together and have a potluck in the park, or, you know, the tot lot, or, we do that all the time, but, um, Forester Park, et cetera, that, that's not a block party.
No, I gotta, I want to stress, a block party is when they're meeting and they've requested the closure of the street and we close the street, hence the idea of a block party where it comes out into the street. Um, all of the activities you've talked about, you know, um, if they're at a park, a picnic area, that's not a block party. That's a group of folks. They, they may want to take advantage of the opportunity to reserve, uh, picnic sites ahead of somebody, but as far as that, that's not what we're talking about with a block party. If a group of people are meeting in one person's front yard and doing something like that, that's not a block party. A block party in this case is when the request is made to close the street.
Mr.?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to comment because I sat in on, uh, John DiLorenzo, our, uh, Parks and Community Services Director's presentation on this with the Parks and Rec Committee. And, uh, I don't remember there being any, any opposition there to this concept. I think, uh, it's purely in response to this and previous councils' attempt to, uh, recover some of the town's costs. Uh, and as town manager just explained, this is not the casual get-together. This is when it's organized, controlled, security's needed to close off the, a street, there's potentially public work staff that's needed to clean up, you know, take barricades up and down. So there is staff time. Uh, I don't think it's, uh, an exorbitant amount for $100, uh, knowing 90 days beforehand. I know the reason for the additional cost was when, uh, there's less lead time, there's more concentrated staff time necessary. So, um, I think this just goes, uh, toward our stated goal of some cost recovery and I don't see it really being detrimental to the public. I don't think it discourages the activities that were already going on. As the town manager just stated, uh, it's rare if, if ever there are more, there's more than one block party. I could even see if two people are on the same street, one gets a permit, the other one can get a permit the next time and it's two separate permits, two separate deals. So...
You know, we could add, a suggestion might be after block party, comma, requiring street closure so that perhaps there's a little better definition and understanding if, if that would add to it because that's certainly the intent. And realistically, I think last year we processed three block party applications townwide.
So, uh, right now, the entire town is paying for those block parties, basically, for whatever fees and costs are incurred, everybody in town is paying for it because that's staff time. This way, at least the folks that are holding the party are more accountable.
Steve, we're talking about staff time, we're not talking about direct costs by the town?
That's correct. Um, part of the, and part of the application process, there may be additional things that are required based on it, but this is the initial application and processing. Um, and in many cases for the block parties, the town has provided and dropped off the barricades and then the party has set them up. And those are the, those are the types of things that we write out in the conditions. You know, you can't bring people and children, set up things in the street until the barricades are set up. So we, we lay out little things and we outline the responsibility of the neighborhood to clean up. And I have to say, our, our community has been very responsible. This is not a, this is not an issue to try to stop that. It's, it's really more making sure we have it and also, uh, this also allows us to ensure that we can make sure the event's insured and we can take advantage of the town's opportunity at cost for the neighborhood to buy our liability insurance so that it's not an exposure to the one or two property owners that filled out the application. Uh, because as you might imagine, in the wine country, many of our block parties involve the local product. And that's, you put those two together, streets, alcohol, vehicles, people, just need to be insured that we've got some common sense applied. But again, this is really, um, you know, we started out by taking the ideas, working on an incremental program with the Park and Rec Commission. And as, as is indicated, we're, we are recommending at the staff level that, you know, first one be free and that's, that's a council's consideration. That's your call.
Is there any more discussion?
Well, I would say, I, I completely understand both perspectives. Um, I, that means there's some places that have a block party of a July 4th, or in the spring or fall. I would say, you know what, let's, let's make it two free block parties per year. I don't want somebody blocking off their street every, uh, you know, Friday night in the summer. Um, I think that would, wouldn't be an undue cost to the town and, and would, you know, address most, if not all, the concerns that it would raise.
I think as town manager stated, there were three total last year, so we might as well not even include it then.
Okay.
But then we're still paying for them. The town, town staff is still supporting those events.
Actually, you are going to, with all, with all due candor, you need, if you're going to accept it, you do need to include it. That's why it was specifically written in here so that there wouldn't be charge because if you strike it out and you don't put a limiting language in, then they will be charged.
Any more discussion?
I'm going to move that we approve, uh, consent calendar, item 9E as, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. That item is, uh, moved, approved. Item 10 presentations, we're going to continue to after item 11. Item 11, Napa Valley Tourism Business Improvement District. Uh, before we get, ask for the staff report, I'm going to disclose that, uh, I'm going to step down from this item since the, uh, the chamber is in a position to benefit from the, uh, from the program financially and also since I have been, and the chamber has been a direct participant in the planning and oversight of this, developing this item. So I will step down from this item and, uh, turn chair over to Vice Mayor Dunbar.
Thank you, Mayor.
Honorable Vice Mayor and Council, uh, the item before you tonight is a request to allow the County of Napa to establish what is known as the Napa Valley Tourism Business Improvement District. And the program requested is under a provision of state law that allows for a self-assessment request by, uh, in this particular case, the lodging property owners. And the intent here is to impose a 2% self-assessment for the purpose of improving and creating a funding source for more effective tourism marketing programs. The, uh, program here is formed pursuant to the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994 and the purpose of the Napa Valley T-Bid is to increase tourism, especially marketing and promotion efforts, uh, primarily designed to increase hotel utilization, which has a positive impact on the region's economy. Initially, areas of focus will be on, uh, destination, international, regional marketing, as well as a whole range of programs. I, I think in tonight's testimony, you will hear from some folks about how this area of the Napa Valley is being outspent by our neighboring jurisdictions in terms of tourism and marketing and that there's a, a business realization that continuing to operate the status quo and the level of funding that's going into regional tourism and marketing promotion is not, not sufficient. Um, so the intent here is to authorize the Town of Yountville to participate in the Napa County, um, program. If the town council does not consent to that, our 11 properties will not be subject to that. They will also not be able to participate in the program and they will not be able to enjoy the benefits of the program as well. Uh, tonight, there are several representatives, including Clay Gregory, uh, Executive Director of the Napa Valley Destination Council, as well as some of the parties. David Shipman has been the local lodging property chair, working on that, and they have a few things that they'd like to share with you as well. But if you have any questions, we've briefed you before on how the proposed program would work there here. And, um, at this point, we did provide you earlier, we do have signed petitions from, um, majority of the property owners, six of the properties representing 72% of the total rooms.
Thank you, uh, Steve. Now, council was also handed, um, a breakdown of, of the vote, the local voting, which is not in the, uh, staff report originally. Has that been presented to the?
That's what I shared with you based on the participation on the signed petitions that you were given. And I will point out, you're asked tonight to form, or to allow for Yountville to participate in the Napa County-wide district. The district will be formed by the County of Napa and the actual petitions are submitted to the county to form the district. The town is a facilitator in the, in the sense that in this particular case, we will initially correct and remit the proposed 2% T-Bid and also we will be the repository and accountable for the coordination of the 1/2% local program.
So, has the, this breakdown with the petitions been made available to the public?
Yes.
It has? Okay, that's what I just wanted to double check.
Active on the wall.
Great, thank you. Um, questions of council about the staff report itself? Bill, anything? I just had one, uh, it's either question or, or clarification that I think you could handle, we could also hear from the, uh, presentation, but this is not a tax, this is not a, a, uh, this is not town, this is not a town tax, town money, this is a separate revenue source.
That's correct. That is correct. It is collected, um, it's a self-assessment at the request of the lodging pursuant. So it is not a, a town-initiated tax. And also, what's very significant about this funding source is it requires that, the state law requires that the lodging properties who are making the petition to impose it upon themselves, they will have a majority, uh, there's a requirement for a local governance body and oversight body and a majority of those representatives have to be the lodging properties. So, uh, the overarching Napa Valley-wide program has to have a majority lodging property, as does the local program option because they're the ones that are taxing themselves and then developing the plan. And then also, it, it is governed in accordance with state law and it is subject to meetings, et cetera, are subject to Brown Act and the requirements that we all have, uh, public adopted budget program and expenditure allocation plans.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, let's go ahead and open the public hearing on this issue and, and welcome the, the presenters, applicants, uh, to, uh, make some statements. Please, your name?
I appreciate it. I'm David Shipman from Vintage Estate, uh, Council and Staff. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, today, along with myself, speaking a little bit about what the T-Bid is and what it has to offer, uh, the Town of Yountville. Uh, we have Clay Gregory from the Destination Council and also, uh, John Lambeth, uh, from Civitas. And, uh, John was instrumental in writing, uh, uh, the 1994 Act with which, uh, the, the proposed management plan, uh, will be following and, uh, and implementing. And so, uh, they can speak to more of the specifics. I, I can talk to you directly about, um, I've had an opportunity to speak with all the lodging, um, operators with the, uh, exception of, uh, the Burgundy House in, uh, in Yountville. And, uh, I was elected the, uh, the captain, if you will, of our community to, uh, to foster in, uh, the, uh, communication effort about what is a T-Bid. Uh, because the T-Bid is, is happening in our county and, um, how can we as a community and how can the lodging properties benefit from that? Uh, also hearing any concerns or questions from, uh, the lodging operators and, and, uh, where appropriate, if I could answer those, I did. Uh, and, uh, otherwise, we brought either Clay or, uh, or John in to help, uh, assist with some of the more technical questions with which, um, how the management plan is implemented and directed and, and where the accountability is. Um, because, uh, it's, uh, this is a, a tremendous effort for not just our community, but for our county. Uh, Clay, uh, in his organization, Destination Council, operates with a $437,000, uh, annual operating budget. Uh, and, uh, we're up, we're up against communities, if you even took Sonoma County and their operating budget for destination marketing and tourism for, for Sonoma County is upwards of $6 million. And so, um, we're, we're behind. And, uh, needless to say, the lodging community is, has, has, has suffered an occupancy and rates and, and ultimately, uh, a funding that comes back to our community. So we think that this is a good vehicle, uh, not necessarily the chosen vehicle. We, uh, uh, but this is the vehicle at the, at this time, uh, that I believe is in the best interest for, uh, for the, the community and the properties and, and the county. So, that, that's why I support it.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions of Mr. Shipman?
Yeah, I do.
Hi, Bill.
Hello there. Uh, it's called a self-assessment tax.
That's correct.
So the assumption is that, uh, you're going to put X number of percentage point on the visitors.
It's a 2% fee.
Now, I say assumption, but that's not necessarily the case. In other words, when you say self-assessment, if you elect not to pass it on to the tourists, you would take it out of your own pocket.
Well, uh, it's a self-assessment in the sense that we're passing it along to the guests. That's correct.
Which is correct. You can, you could elect to take it out of your pocket if you wanted without passing it on?
I don't believe so. That may be a question more for John Lambeth, but, um, the...
So it's a mandatory assessment then?
For the guests? Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Fee, there's, there's another way you could look at it and it's, it's, it's an additional fee. If, if you've traveled to, say, San Diego, Monterey, uh, New York, uh, and you look at your hotel bill at the end of your stay, um, there could be multiple assessments or fees that are put on to your, to your hotel, uh, bill at the end of your stay. Um, this is just one, again, one, uh, one funding vehicle that, that we're choosing for destination marketing and tourism. But the, but, but the guests will, will pay the, uh, the assessment.
Okay. Councilor Chilton?
Mr. Shipman, um, thanks for coming. Uh, you mentioned you had spoken to everybody except for, uh, the folks at the Bordeaux House.
I was not able to connect with, with anyone at the Bordeaux House. That's correct.
Uh, Yountville Inn, Railway Inn, Hotel Luca, Petit Logi, they did not sign. Are they?
Let me back up. Burgundy House and Railway Inn, uh, I took the...
Oh, Burgundy House, not, uh...
Sorry, Bor-, uh, Bordeaux.
You meant, yeah.
Right. But the Burgundy House is no longer in existence. Uh, the, my conversation with George Altamir Jr., uh, representing Yountville Inn, um, I took that for Railway Inn, um, as well, because they own that property.
So, those other properties that didn't sign in your, have, maybe they're here, um, or they opposed? They just didn't want to sign? What's?
I think it was, it, honestly, I think it was a little bit of a mixed bag. Um, you had properties that, um, and, and are owners, I think, that were rendering opinions without all the information. That was, we'll put that up on the shelf here. I think you had other property, um, owners and operators that, um, that just, just said that the timing wasn't right for them. You know, right now, in, in, in our economy, our guests are, are saying that they, they don't want to pay the rates that we're asking for right now. We're doing a tremendous deep, deep discounting even in our community. And why would we put more on top of our bill? And so that was, that was an opinion that, that, uh, that was out there. And then, quite, quite frankly, um, there's, there's a, 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 a strong opinion as well that, that this is something that TOT should support. You know, that, that TOT was originally, uh, meant and generated, although it is, it goes into a general fund now, um, to fund the engine with which funds TOT. And the engine that funds TOT is destination marketing and tourism and the hotels, and the hotel tax. And so, but the fact is that, that the way that communities are structured today and the lack of funding, the lack of, 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 of sales tax, um, T, we're not going to get more TOT out of the Town of Yountville for destination marketing, we're not going to get more TOT out of the County of Napa or the City of Napa for destination marketing for the lodging industry. And, um, we're, we're behind. Fairfield has, has, has a T-Bid that, that has more money than we do. You know, there's something wrong with that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller, any questions? Uh, the, uh, one question I had, I think I'm going to save until we have a chance to hear maybe from Mr. Gregory and some of the other staff and then we can, I'm sure we'll have more questions at that point.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
And, uh, just a reminder, if you could state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. Clay Gregory, uh, and I live in Napa. Thank you for hearing this. Um, let me first say one thing about what David was saying about a voluntary assessment. It's, it's voluntary in the sense that no one is imposing this on the hotel community. They have to sign petitions to say that they're in favor of it. So it's not voted on by the people to put into place, it's voted on by the businesses who will be doing the funding and then they four have to see the, the benefit. And that's the real kind of nuts and bolts of this is that the, the businesses that are assessed have to see a benefit to how that money is spent. So we're held accountable for driving visitors to, to the, the right kind of visitors to these hotels at the quiet times of the year and the quiet times of the week and the, um, times when they have occupancy. So that, that's fundamentally important. A couple of other things, just to add on to what David said, this really is the future of destination marketing and, and for us, it's actually the reality that people have been... of destination marketing, and for us, it's actually the reality that people have passed this by dramatically. Napa Valley is by far the most well-known destination in the state of California to not have a business, Tourism Business Improvement District. There are 45 of these districts in place now. Not one of them has not been renewed or has been dissolved. So, it's a system that is working and is commonplace because other communities are facing the same things that we are in terms of the use of TOT. It's going to parks, it's going to redevelopment, it's going to a lot of places, but other than destination marketing. So, this vehicle was written in 1989 as a private sector way to keep destination marketing alive and ticking. And as David said, our budget is $437,500 a year that right now comes from the county of Napa and the city of Napa. Each of the other cities spend a significant amount of money too, so the total spending for the county-wide area is probably about $1 million a year. But Sonoma, as David said, is six times that. Monterey is four times that, even Livermore is more than double that. Paso Robles is right at the same level. And so, what's happening is that we are not managing the message of what Napa Valley is and what a great destination it is and why folks ought to come here. Instead, our competitive regions are managing that messaging. So, what we get is Sonoma Valley, and I'm sure you've all seen them, has big billboards, and this is just one example, on the way that up through Marin County where visitors from San Francisco Drive, that say Sonoma County, or Sonoma Valley, "Real Wine Country." Well, that's a slap in the face at Napa Valley, and it's not even subtle. On the Facebook page of the city of Paso Robles from time to time, it says, "Paso Robles, the new Napa Valley." Two issues ago in Sunset Magazine, on the back of every issue, they have a section that's called "Then and Now." Southern Oregon was featured as now, Napa Valley was featured as then. So, we're losing ground, and there is no other alternative for short-term, meaningful funding than a Tourism Business Improvement District. So, I hope we can get your support on this.
Thank you. Are there specific questions, counsel?
I do have a couple of comments that are questions, just to go through some of the nuts and bolts that are in the report, but just so that they're discussed here is specifically for numbers as they relate to Yountville. You know, you've talked about overall how many dollars might be brought in throughout the valley, but can you just speak specifically to what it means to Yountville?
Yeah, Steve is more lucid on this, but I think that the number that we're looking at from that half a percent that will stay in Yountville, that was raised in Yountville, is about $170,000 is the rough...
150 to 170, that would be earmarked for local programming and marketing.
And what I look at that as is similar to what, how the Napa Valley wine industry has evolved. The Napa Valley vintners talk first and foremost about the Napa Valley as a whole, and they've even gotten some laws put in place so that a smaller appellation like Oakville has to have the name Napa Valley next to it, which is not a federal law, that's a state law. But then, there are Oakville Wine Growers Group, there's a Carneros Quality Alliance Group, there's the How Mountain Growers Group. They do things for their area that show why that area is special, but they come together on the big things, like the auction Napa Valley, like market visits to Southern California last year, like premier Napa Valley. And it's the old concept that my former mentor, Mr. Mandavi, had of all the boats rising with the rising tide. And I think this combination of doing much more impactful countywide marketing and then having each town do more impactful marketing for itself is a win-win for everybody.
Well, that comes a little bit to another question I had, which is, how do you answer the, I've had two different people say, "Yountville's fine, we don't need to participate, you know, we're doing as well as anybody in the valley." So, again, what's in it for us?
Well, additional funding for marketing, so you can use that in the way that the local board decides to use it. But I think, Yountville is fine, Yountville's in great shape. But times change and things happen, and I think that not being part of this group would clearly be a detriment to Yountville's positioning, because we couldn't do, we couldn't spend any assessment funds that include Yountville in it. Pacific Grove was not in the Monterey County T-bid the first year. So, Pacific Grove did not even exist on the map. They didn't have any Pacific Grove lodging in their destination marketing, they didn't have any mention of anything in Pacific Grove. So, the next year, Pacific Grove joined in, because I think it's important to be part of what will be a $4 million total effort instead of just relying on a smaller local effort. I think it's the combination that's powerful. So, I think it's a benefit to Yountville. A good example, we did a familiarization tour around the Mustard Festival, and we had fifty, depending on the day, we had between 10 and 20 very good journalists that our PR company brought in, and they spent time in every single town in Napa County. And we've gotten stories and terrific feedback from that. And that, that's a national firm that none of the towns on their own would be able to afford. And I got to go to New York because of that firm and meet with nine editors and writers from our A-list travel publications, Conde Nast Traveler, Travel and Leisure, Departures Magazine, Elite Traveler, Brides, and on and on and on. And we had nine meetings in a row, and all of them are going to do something about the Napa Valley, and in every one of those meetings, Yountville was included. So, I think it's important to be part of the bigger picture.
And one way to look at this, correct me if I'm wrong, is the 0.5% of the 2% could be considered money that offsets what the town may have to spend on tourist or visitor-related items. It's kind of, it's basically a new source of revenue, even though it's not the town's money, the town saves money.
That's up to the town, that's, you could use it for that, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Shilton.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a couple of questions related to your organization and T-bid, because if I read through the T-bid document, never, or virtually never, does it actually mention destination Napa Valley. And if I go, I don't know if you're...
Excuse me, Counselman, which document do you mean? The marketing document or the management district plan?
The district plan.
Because, yeah, that's not a marketing document, that's about the logistics of how the district will work, and John would be the best person to ask about that.
Okay, so, specifics about governance and...
Exactly.
Okay, that, yeah, okay.
Any other questions so far?
Not without that, no.
Then, were you going to introduce?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, John Lambeth is the founder of a company called Civitas that is based in Sacramento. He has personally been involved in more than 25, developing more than 25 of these districts, so he is an expert at them, and I think that question will be perfect for him.
And while he's coming up, I just wanted to disclose that I had had prior conversations both with Mr. Gregory and Mr. Shipman, who were kind of introducing this concept to me, just wanted to disclose that before we continue.
Thank you.
Again, if you could state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. John Lambeth with Civitas, I'm happy to be here tonight. It's after a very long effort with, working with a lot of the lodging community and a lot of the folks throughout the county, so very pleased to be here and very happy to answer your questions.
Counselor Shilton, I suspect you have a question.
Go straight into it. So, there's, I think one of my concerns here is, has to do with, I don't want to call it duplication of effort, but it's creating more boards and commissions, et cetera. And I look at this, I'm on page 10 of the district management plan, and it goes through this service plan and budget, and it's got value-wise, sales and marketing, which is only actually half of the spending of the total estimated $4 million. Individual destination marketing is $1 million, administration and operations is half a million dollars, local government fees, et cetera, et cetera. Could you explain how the governance structure of this works? This has been presented, I think, in many ways, that this is money that's going to go to the Destination Council to promote the entire valley, and if I read this, I see that half of it is, is controlled really by majority by the lodging properties with minority participation by other individuals. Could you go through that?
Sure, and there's several questions wrapped in there, I guess I'll answer the governance first. The model for these organizations, and I think Clay touched on this a bit, is really to have a private nonprofit corporation ultimately receiving these dollars. So, it is, this is a true public-private partnership in that the cities and the towns, the county are all partners in this, but ultimately, at the end of the day, the money through this special benefit assessment district goes to a private nonprofit corporation. And if you're familiar with business improvement districts in other places, this is a very common model that's been used for quite a few years in California. Here, that nonprofit corporation is the Napa Valley Tourism Corporation, and this is what you're mentioning, the Destination Council isn't specifically mentioned there. And there was a need to create this corporation as the recipient of those funds essentially for the countywide piece of this effort. The makeup of that board is here, those board members are not paid, there is no administrative costs associated with that corporation per se. As it relates to the actual budget here and the administrative costs, believe me, all of the lodging properties we're working with and have talked to, it's in their interest to keep these costs as low as possible, and there's been probably more discussion on this topic than any other. And so, these discussions really came after a lot of discussion on the admin side of the fees, a lot of discussions with the town, with the cities, with the county, about what really was needed, and you can see at the end of the day, the amount for the administrative costs on the public side of this is 2%. So, that's a fairly low number, we'd like to have it even lower, but it's only 2% for the admin costs. The other number that you mentioned was the actual, what's needed to deliver those marketing programs. So, you've got a marketing program, and Clay certainly could talk to this, we've broken out essentially the staff member's time from the actual placement of the ads. You've got to have the staff members in order to do that, and that's what this other money represents, this 12.5%. So, really, the monies dedicated toward the overall countywide effort really are the total of those two, or 72% of the dollars. That's really the engine going towards the countywide marketing efforts. The other 25% is refunded directly to the local communities to spend locally, and of course, you've got a 5% contingency and renewal item in there too. If you don't need that contingency, that contingency could be spent on direct marketing efforts as well. So, I think what you'll find is these organizations tend to be very lean, very little overhead, and that both the cities and the towns and the lodging properties are going to demand that the bulk of this money goes into those direct programs that help bring people to the valley.
And if I could, there's one other reason the Destination Council's not named directly. The same way you won't find any entity named directly for the local option, this is performance-based, and if the lodging properties are looking at the program and the action plan developed by the Destination Council and it doesn't meet with their success, they're not obligated to give this money to the Destination Council, nor are they obligated to fund it to the local chamber or the towns. That's why each of these entities annually have to approve an annual budget and an allocation and expenditure plan. So, there's a lot, it's not a guaranteed funding source for five years for the Destination Council or for the town.
So, to stick on the budget part of it, if I, excuse me, if I look at this rough budget, in principle, or not in principle, in theory, you know, a new board is established, they have meetings, say, you know what, we really support the Destination Council's, what they're going to do with this money, they've got a very solid business plan, we feel like it's going to be used wisely. In your opinion, is that they've got the ability to write a $2.7 million check to the Destination Council to make this stuff happen, or they have 2.2 million and the district itself has, you know, office space and an executive director, I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand, to make sure that doesn't exist.
It's the former, it's the 2.7, and there is no legal entity, the district, this is a special benefit assessment district, it raises the money. The legal entity here is that nonprofit corporation, which they don't envision at this point that nonprofit having staff members or anything else, those board members won't be paid. Its job is to essentially, as Steve pointed out, is really to spend the monies but do it efficiently and effectively.
Okay. I'll switch a little bit then on the local money. There's a local board that's established, it has seven members, four of which are hotel properties, so constitutes the majority, and then there's three other members, one from the chamber, one from the town, and I think one council member. Is there, there's no, if I read this, there's nothing that says that that board can't say, you know what, the most important use of this money is countywide planning, and therefore we want to give that money to the Napa Valley Destination Council. Is that correct?
I would say there's a problem with that.
Yeah, I would too.
Because the plan specifically lays out that that will be for local marketing efforts, and there is a list, a list, it is somewhat generalized, but there is a list of the kinds of activities we're talking about. But it, the plan clearly states that that is for marketing, in this case, this town. That's what that money is for, and this lays out in bullet form, which Steve knows well, and we can thank him for a lot of his efforts on this, exactly what that money can be used for.
If you would, page two of the staff report goes into great detail about the local program, and it outlines, for example, local funding, specific niche market advertising, that could be sunset ads, it could be targeted marketing, advertising purchase, promotional material, website, print, collateral, in other words, walking maps, guides, things to do, what to do, visitor center, special event, programming, underwriting and promotion. One of the things that we have happen that's unique to Yountville is we are probably the least diversified of all of the Napa Valley communities, and our businesses are primarily restaurants, lodging, and the ranch market, and this would allow for some seed money to principally go in to help underwrite some of the existing, expand some of the special events. Again, these would all be the range of, we also have community and cultural arts programming, music on the plaza, movie night, sculpture walks, film festival, tourism-related streetscape enhancement and maintenance, seasonal and other tourism and visitor-related programs, local tourism shuttle or other visitor transportation programs, seed funding for community-based programs, trails, pedestrian paths, signage, bike paths, which enhance and improve upon the visitor experience and enhance levels of maintenance above that which the entity normally provides. And the key thing here is we may fund a level of effort one year for a certain type of a project and then do other things. So, it's really designed about what's unique and what do we want to work on that's appropriate for Yountville. And that funding would be allocated, and we're already working on the concept of a draft work plan for this year if the council directs that we're to participate in the program.
Well, that, I guess the same question related to Destination Napa Valley or Destination Council has to do with Chamber of Commerce. Is there any expected, I mean, I think there seems to be a fait accompli expectation of coordination between the Destination Council and the countywide. That could not be the case, obviously, if the board decided not to do that. Is there an expected relationship with the local one and the Chamber of Commerce?
I would say it's open for that work plan. For example, let's say, very hypothetical, I mean, if you did special event and underwriting and marketing and the chamber is involved in some of the events, that may be a logical contract. And that would engage in a contract that this body would approve and authorize the disbursement of items. Another thing they could do is they say, you know, we want to put banners on the street, you know, we want a seasonal banner program, let's go ahead and pay for them, and therefore they select, determine what the contract is, and we write the check to XYZ Banner Company. So, it's a whole range of programs, and it could be, you know, funding for a music concert series, so maybe they provide a little seed money for a coordinator and stipends, musical equipment rental, whatever we have, and we have a 12-week concert series. These are all the types of things that are eligible, and the seven-member body will sit down, develop a work plan, meet periodically, and approve the expenditure. And also, we have to file an annual report with the parent, Napa Valley Tourism Corporation, so there's responsibilities. What's not, what I want to make sure everybody, the town does not get this $170,000 and gets to go spend it the way the town wants to. That will not happen, and that's why the governing body's there. Nor is this $170,000 going to the chamber. Both of those are factual misstatements. This body will determine, and it may very well be in some cases, the town ends up being positioned to do some of these things, and it will do it and be reimbursed for the cost, or it will facilitate the others, or it could be the chamber or other groups yet to be determined.
I'm going to keep asking questions. The, you made earlier, or somebody made an earlier comment about the town providing the support or infrastructure, so for the local, the local district board, shall we call it? I mean, who writes up minute meetings, where are they held, is the town staff going to essentially be the, when somebody says on the board, you know, we really need to go out and investigate the cost for this, who's going to do that?
I would say there's a combination. The admin structure is designed to allow for the local government to maintain the local fund and structure that, and that is part of what that admin fee goes to help cover. And it is anticipated that there'll be a minimum of three meetings and an annual report, so, you know, that's identified in the district management plan. So, you know, that's identified in the district management plan.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mueller, questions?
I have one very minor question. In the government document in Appendix Two, there is a lodging that's to be assessed called Bella Vista. Who is that?
Bella Vista does not exist in the incorporated town of Yountville limits.
So that's an error, that's an error in terms of its classification. Okay.
So that's my next question. All the lodgings must be within the town limit?
For the action you're taking tonight, yes.
Okay.
The unincorporated county lodging properties are subject to the County of Napa's approval process.
Just talking about ours.
Yep.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, Councilwoman Chilton.
Just to go back to governance issues, the local district board, this, this, the TBID district is not elected by a majority of the lodging owners in terms of whether it goes through or not. It's a proportional share of the rooms, the estimated assessment. How does the local board get elected? Is it in the same manner, so the 11 properties in Yountville, they get weighted voting, and that's who gets the four board seats on the, on the local district board?
I think we were, we didn't get into detail in here in terms of the election of members of that. We sort of left that up to each individual community. We basically said that the town would work with the lodging community in terms of the appointment or selection of those folks.
The bigger one, so is that, does that mean the local one is up to us? If somebody says, we want proportional representation, or we want it by property, one vote each?
Well, the voting is set, the makeup of that board and the voting within that board is set.
Correct.
There's seven members, one member each gets one vote, so that's set. But in terms of the selection of those folks, that has not been set by this plan.
Okay. Okay, that's, okay.
The short answer, I think, to the question is if the council supports going forward, we would send out a letter to the 11 properties, indicate who's interested. Hopefully, we have at least four, because if not, we've got to go find four. And I think we will have some interest. And then if there's more, then we would send them all and have a, you know, as the council might determine, an appropriate method for the selection of that.
So in the end, it's a, that's the council who has that ability to make that determination?
I'm going to say, at this point, it needs to be probably in concurrence with the overall, you know, I think the council could make a recommendation to the Napa Valley Tourism for its method for selection. There is not, I think John's correct, there is not a cookie cutter specific that says, this is what you must do. What is identified is that it has to have four lodging properties, one town staff, one elected, and one chamber representative.
So ultimately, the Napa Valley TBID is the one, district, is the one who determines the local rules?
Correct.
Somebody has to be the ultimate arbiter of that. Okay.
Councilmember Dutton.
No questions.
No questions. I've got to ask some questions. I've got a reputation to uphold.
[laughing]
So could you just, I know we've kind of spoken about this, but the fundamental difference between Chamber of Commerce and this TBID entity, this is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if you could maybe define the difference, because some of the feedback I received is, and it's been mentioned tonight, this is a Chamber of Commerce thing, it's already happening, why put this additional assessment on the lodging industry, even though the lodging industry is doing it, the self-assessment? So can you explain maybe, and I know Mr. Gregory explained the additional dollars that would be generated, but just more from a philosophical standpoint, how does this differ from each local chamber?
Well, I would say this is an effort by lodging to help promote tourism, to help promote visitors to the town. And the chamber has some of those efforts as well. And I know here, you funded the chamber for some of those efforts, but this is a specific move by lodging to allow for a stable funding source for those efforts. And that's what this, this proposal is all about, if that's what you mean about the proposal. If you talk about the group in particular, you can see the local group that's identified here is a majority of lodging members. And this model, as Mr. Gregory mentioned, this model follows the model that you see in lots of other, in the other 45 districts in the state. It's also the model you see with other business improvement districts. It takes advantage of both the public strengths and the private strengths. You've got a public mechanism that makes this not a voluntary assessment, but mandatory once it's imposed, right? Everybody has to pay. So you know it's a level playing field. But you get the efficiencies of really having a private sector-led effort. And so you've got lodging making sure that the money's being spent very effectively and very efficiently. And that's, and that's what this proposal really is all about.
And so far, you've received unanimous support for this plan throughout the county, all the cities, board supervisors.
That's right.
Except for the one more city you're going to tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, those, those are the only questions I have for you right now.
Okay.
Any others, council, for any of the applicants?
Thank you.
Is that all the formal applicant presentation for this evening? Or are there any other comments before I open it up to the general public? Nope? So anyone in the public like to speak on this issue? Now would be the time. No? Okay. With that, I'll return the conversation back to, I'll close the public hearing and return it back to council for discussion and potential action. Councilmember Mueller, would you like to begin?
Yes, I think that there were three things I considered, looking at this, that were important to me. The first is that the property business owners who will be paying more than 50% of the assessment proposed need to be buying into that. And from everything that I can see that's been submitted to the council, that is indeed the case. Another important thing was that there would be an annual business plan that this committee that we just discussed would be in charge of putting together and be approved. So if, you know, things aren't going right, there's an annual mechanism to get everybody in agreement. And the third thing was that after five years, there is a whole new renewal system. So in my opinion, I think there's sufficient interest and support. There is a mechanism to, on an annual basis, to work out what needs to be worked out in a five-year sunset or renewal clause that can take care of anything if it really goes south after it's had enough time to, and see if it really works and everyone likes it. So based on that, I'm in support.
Thank you. Councilmember Chilton.
Yeah, I have to admit, I've gone back and forth on this one a lot. I think what's interesting about it is, is that, you know, the money is coming from the private sector and it's benefiting the business, you know, the businesses of the Valley, which therefore benefits the Valley as a whole, including governmental entities and citizens. I actually thought, what I think is most ironic is the thing that makes the least sense to me out of all this has to do with this sort of local carve-out. We hear all these arguments about why Napa Valley as a community, Mr. Gregory made some good arguments, needs to market itself, and we have this little carve-out for every jurisdiction to do themselves, which, I'll be very honest, I felt like was an attempt to go to every council and say, ooh, we've got some money for you, so don't worry, your self-interest is at heart. I really see the Napa Valley as a whole is the issue. So I do have concerns about, I would call it duplication of effort. We now have a separate board, we have the town, we have the Chamber of Commerce. There's a lot of layers in here that, that kind of start to overlap. The second piece is this concept of self-assessment. And this is not a self-assessment. This is a, this is using the taxing authority of the various towns or jurisdictions to get a majority of people to say, everybody has to pay. Right now, the Destination Council could go out and say, would you please self-assess yourself 2% and give it to us? We're going to use it in these very valuable ways. That's, that's available today. So, you know, private money for private marketing for the Valley, that seems to be the most efficient way as a private association. Go out there if you think it's that important to do it. You know, I have to say, there's nobody that came here tonight to oppose it. So I do feel that there are properties out there that probably have reasonable concerns. It's not one man, one vote in this situation. But if they're not going to show up and say, hey, you know, this really hurts my business, then, then I consider that to be an issue. So I think the oversight is good, the renewal period. Ultimately, if the return is not there, the businesses are paying the money. I mean, we can say it's being passed on to consumers, but I know, Mr. Shipman knows, everybody knows that he's about to raise his hotel rates 2%, and he's not getting that money. And so that trade-off is being made, and that is a competitiveness issue between us and Sonoma or anywhere else, is your rates are now 14%. So I will support it. I want to be really clear, this is not a tax. This is not the government getting money in some manner. I certainly have a disagreement on the concept that TOT was originally intended just to market private business, and, you know, I don't want to see somebody come back and say, you know, we're already taxed at 14% in this town. So you have to take that into account, because in fact, you're taxed at 12%, and you've made a choice to add on 2% more to your marketing budget. So with that, those qualifications, I will support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dutton.
I think good comments by the previous council members. I would just like to add, I think, something that this is long overdue. I think if you talk to anybody in marketing, the unbelievable bang for the buck that Napa Valley has gotten is unbelievable. When you mention, we spend $400,000, that's nothing. So I think you really have to be proud, and however it happened, however it involved, Napa Valley is a destination, and it is a trademark that's worth a heck of a lot more than $400,000. That being said, the fact that we are getting assaulted from all sides is also a very true reality. And to just sit there and say, well, we don't have to worry about it, we've got our name, it's not going to work. Eventually, you're going to be so far behind, it's going to cost a lot more than what they're proposing to get caught up. So I, for one, I think this is a, an excellent way to go about it. I know they've talked about it for years, and is finally glad to see something moving forward. And then another aspect of it is the fact that we do get, you know, for our jurisdiction, a very small jurisdiction, a significant amount of money at $150,000 to $170,000. You can do an awful lot with that. And, and I would look forward to see what they could do, you know, what we can do with it. It's very important to our town, obviously, to keep that occupancy rates going. And I think, really, if you look in the Valley or anywhere else, I think our hotels have done a tremendous job in the last year of the economy in responding to the efforts that they had to take on themselves. Certainly, they're not getting the room rates that they would like, but they have managed, and if you look at our rate, our occupancy rates, they have managed to keep the, you know, the butts in the bed, as they say, so to speak. And that really generates that many more dollars to our restaurants and everything. So I think hats off to them, you know, getting in and digging in, taking the cuts that they had to take. I know they weren't easy, but at least they did it, and they kept the people coming, and we've all benefited from them. So I'm looking forward to seeing how this goes. I, I think it's going to be a very successful program.
Thank you for your comments, and you are going to receive unanimous support from this council tonight. I think it, I agree with what the previous comments, the message from the previous comments. I think this is an opportunity to strengthen the Napa Valley brand. I think the industry, the lodging industry itself, is stepping up, recognizing that something needs to be done to maintain the level of excellence and expectation that visitors to Yountville and Napa Valley have. So I wanted to just make a couple other more pointed comments, specifically to the the local assessment, Councilwoman Chilton commented on specifically. That was one of my great concerns when I was first starting to hear some of the information about this, which was, are we going to get lost? Is Yountville going to be lost in this, you know, overall scheme? But I think that's, that was a key factor for me, that we're going to be seeing direct benefit from this. It will help us maintain our, our status in the Valley and really throughout the world. I think it will be easy for us to work, you know, the town to work with the lodging industry to find sources, you know, projects to really enhance the visitor experience here. So I think that's going to be an easy partnership to enter into. Like I said, I just think it's, it's appropriate. It would not surprise me if other industries follow suit, frankly, because we, we keep hearing how difficult it is for people to, you know, small, especially small businesses to, to stand out. Well, this is an opportunity for some of the big business partners and neighbors to get together and help. So I think, I know what the council's position is, but if somebody would like to make a formal motion, now would be the time.
I'll move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2868-10, Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Yountville, State of California, granting consent to the County of Napa to form the Napa Valley Tourism Business Improvement District, TV, excuse me, NVTBID.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen.
If we could welcome back the mayor, if she's within earshot.
Thank you for taking this.
Thank you. In case anybody just arrived while we're waiting for the mayor to come back in, we are going now to Item 10, Presentation from, or the item is Napa Countywide Community Climate Action Framework Introduction by Elliot Hurwitz of the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency.
Actually, Sandra Smith will give a slight introduction and overview as to how the town got where it got and where we're going.
And before we do that, I'll hand the meeting back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I had a nice little nap. So we're moving to Item 10, Presentation, Napa Countywide Community Climate Action Framework Introduction. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. In 2007, the town adopted policies committing to support the principles of sustainability and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And part of this commitment, the town participated in the Cities for Climate Protection Campaign that's sponsored by ICLI, the Local Government's First Sustainability, and coordinated by the Napa County Transportation Planning Agency. All jurisdictions in the Napa Valley join this effort. And as a participant in the program, the town has conducted a greenhouse gas emissions inventory and established a greenhouse gas emissions reduction target. It has also been in the process of completing a climate action plan with the assistance and oversight of NCTPA. The plan was drafted as a countywide document, but as the drafting was ongoing, it became clear that the unique conditions of each jurisdiction called in the question the effectiveness of the plan as countywide document. So it was recast as a more general policy framework. And this framework will be used by Yountville and serve as a foundation as it develops its own specific climate action plan. And it will, is intended to rely on characteristics that are unique to Yountville when it does this. And the framework can act as a menu of options. And the framework includes 53 potential reduction actions categorized under six different reduction goals. And before I turn the item over to Elliot Hurwitz with NCTPA to present this introduction to you, I want to briefly comment on the state laws that have been recently enacted that address greenhouse gas emissions reductions and the general concepts of sustainability. These are informative because they identify what the town's responsibilities are under these laws and what it is doing now and what it will be doing in the future. The first is AB 32, and that law commits the state to a statewide reduction of greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by the year 2020. The California Air Resources Board is tasked with this reduction, and it's really aimed at higher-level actions such as developing fuel standards that will meet these, these reductions. And there's no specific requirement on local jurisdictions to meet these requirements, but it's widely accepted that local jurisdictions have the best ability to address local actions to achieve these reductions. SB 35 requires local governments to tie land use and transportation policies together -- in order to reduce these AB 32 reduction levels. Beginning this year, the California Environmental Quality Act requires local jurisdictions to evaluate the effects of greenhouse gas emissions on the environment when analyzing the impacts of development projects. And the framework and any subsequent Yountville-specific climate action plan will be informative in these review and these efforts. Also, starting this year, the state mandated adoption of a water-efficient landscape ordinance, and this applies to new and rehabilitated landscape areas of a certain size that require building permits. The broad goals of this program are to increase water efficiency and reduce water use in landscaped areas. Lastly, the State Green Building Standards Code, also known as CalGreen, will take effect on January 1st of 2011, and it lists mandatory green building measures that are intended to achieve reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, energy consumption, and water use. So with that background in mind, I would like to introduce Elliot Hurwitz and have him introduce the framework.
Thanks, Sandra. Good evening, Mayor Sossen, members of the council, citizens of Yountville. Thank you for having me here tonight. Very happy to be here. I'm Elliot Hurwitz, NCTPA staff, and I'm going to talk about this Napa Countywide Community Climate Action Framework. Just to give you a little context of where we are in the process of developing this, the framework has been accepted as a draft by the NCTPA Board and has asked us to talk with the community at large about it, which is what we're spending this spring. We've got a series of public meetings that I will also talk about before I finish, and we'll go back to the NCTPA Board later on in the spring for their acceptance of this as a final document. I want to back up a little bit and talk about the overall context in which this effort is being set. There really are two different, different kinds of dynamics at play in terms of this. One of this is the, kind of, I visualize as kind of a downward pointing triangle of regulation. It's coming all the way down, you have things, and it's a very rapidly evolving and dynamic environment. Everything from international treaties, heard about the Copenhagen Treaty in Kyoto, all those, all those things are being negotiated now and over the coming years, and those will all have kind of trickle-down kind of regulatory effects. Likewise, at the national level, there will be some kind of national climate or energy policy that is enacted, and that will have an effect. And that's also kind of very dynamic, dynamically shifting. And the other, and the final kind of layer of kind of regulatory regime that's evolving is, as Sandra indicated, is what's happening at the state. As she said, there's AB 32, which kind of sets these broad goals for the state. And the second one, AB 375, I want to talk about a little more in detail than Sandra did. What SB 375 does is it addresses that portion of greenhouse gas emissions that are solely due to cars and light trucks. That happens to be a significant portion of the greenhouse gas profile, particularly in the Bay Area and particularly in Napa County. It's over, it's over half of the profile in our county is due to cars and light trucks. But what SB 375 does is it takes two former state planning regimes, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, the much-beloved RENA, which every six or seven years, the state will come and say, give, at a regional scale, this is okay, Bay Area, you have to, you have to come, show us how you're going to provide housing for your workforce. And so every six or seven years, we get from ABAG an assignment that we have to account for a certain number of housing units. So that's the RENA cycle. And that's been on a kind of six- or seven-year, sometimes eight-year cycle. Now simultaneous with that, there's been a regional transportation plan that's on a four-year revolving cycle, that every four years comes up with how, what's our plan for transportation infrastructure? Now what SB 375 does is, for the first time, it combines those two planning efforts, recognizing that transportation and housing are intimately connected with each other. And what is, what will happen is that the state will assign each region, and for us, it's the Bay Area region, a reduction target for greenhouse gases due to cars and light trucks. And it will be, most likely be, a percent per capita reduction. Let's say, okay, Bay Area, you'll have to reduce your percent, your per capita greenhouse gas reduction for cars and light trucks by a certain percentage. And then the housing plan and the transportation plan will be combined into, and here's the new acronym and buzzword, is a region-wide sustainable communities strategy, what they're called, the SCS. And that will be, again, the combination of the transportation plan and the housing plan. And that Sustainable Community Strategy is mandated by SB 375 to show how the region as a whole will meet this reduction target. SB 375 does not contain any specific local jurisdictional mandates. This is something that will be worked out as, according, by each region. And how that will happen is, as you can imagine, under very vigorous negotiation and discussion at the regional level at this point. We are expecting to receive from the state our regional reduction target in June, and a draft reduction target in June and a final target in September. Meanwhile, the modelers and planners, particularly at ABAG and MTC, who independently in the past have been doing these housing forecasts and transportation forecasts, have been combining their planning staff efforts to prepare so that in 2013, which is when the next, the round of these cycles come up, we will have the first integrated planning cycle. So in 2013, we will come out with a full Sustainable Community Strategy that will somehow, again, in a way that has not yet been determined, decide, you know, where housing and transportation is going to go. So that's, that's a bit long-winded, but that's, this is a significant new planning process that will affect us. The final state-level planning element that is significant, as Sandra mentioned, is the revisions to SEQA. And SEQA, for the first time this year, now is requiring that greenhouse gas emissions, the effect of the development on the greenhouse gas profile of the development be considered as part of the development approval process. And the, the way in which they, and the reason, in fact, that we have no longer decided to call as a climate action plan, is they said formerly adopted climate action plans will now have similar status under SEQA as any other formerly adopted plan, such as a specific plan or a general plan, such that if a development project comes before you for approval, if they are in compliance with a locally adopted climate action plan, then that will fulfill their obligations under SEQA in terms of their greenhouse gas emission impact. So again, at that point, we step back from saying, okay, we wanted to make sure that each jurisdiction is going to be comfortable adopting whatever, in whichever way they want to go about accounting for this SEQA issue. For example, St. Helena will be adopting, as they're, they're doing a full general plan update, they will be adopting a specific climate protection element in their general plan, and that will serve as their guidance for their climate action. The County of Napa is going to develop its own specific climate action plan, focusing, for the most part, on the effects of agricultural conversions. So that's, they're going to be blazing a lot of new ground in terms of the regulatory and science, how those two meet there. So the formal status of the planning regime under SEQA will, will remain an open question for this, for the Town of Yountville to consider. So all of this, regulatory and legal dimension is one dynamic that's driving all of the action around climate protection. Simultaneous with this, and to some degree, just as powerfully, there has been a surge of public interest in doing something. And this is, I think, motivated a lot of councils. This certainly was the motivation behind what's put, for example, Sonoma County is now really seen as not just a state leader, but a national leader, because they had a citizenry that just pushed their councils to enact locally-designed climate protection programs. I've heard, you know, somebody, one of the regional leaders referred to this as the Wayne Gretzky School of Planning, where you basically try and skate where you think the puck's going to be, where we're trying to develop these climate action regimes while we're still seeing the evolution of the regulatory regime. So that we're looking out, you know, 2013 for the state kind of regional regulatory shape to begin to become clear. We're still not sure where national and international are going to go, but nonetheless, citizens and recognize that this is, this is an issue that's got, that there's something we can start doing right now. And so as we, under part of that, we were able to get some funding from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District to do some initial work. As Sandra again mentioned, we had this Cities for Climate Protection Program that Yountville participated in, along with the other jurisdictions in the, in the county. And that really was the beginning of putting together this framework. I'm going to do just a brief introduction to what's in it. I have additional copies of the executive summary of it, which I'll leave here. The footprint, the first thing that's in the framework is the, the basic assessment of where are we now? And again, this is, this is done, this is, even how these assessments are done is an evolving process, and various kinds of methodologies have been, are under development. But we took kind of the best tools we had at the time and have developed the footprint. So there is, you'll see in the report, an analysis and in a way that we can compare across the town, across the county, what the different profiles and in terms of what is our current greenhouse gas emission profile according to residential use, residential commercial issues, and transportation issues. The second thing that it does is we basically made an assumption of, let's just see, since we don't know what the regulatory reduction target is going to be, what, let's just kind of put a stake in the ground in terms of what kind of reduction target will be. And different communities in different parts of the region, for example, have, again, due to more kind of citizen activism, have kind of put even more aggressive reduction targets in their local plans. But what we've done here in Napa is just taken the overall statewide reduction target that AB 32 set out, which was, we want to get back to 1990 levels by 2020. And so that's been kind of set in this framework. Let's, let's see, what does that mean for us if we try and meet that goal? So there's the footprint, there's reduction targets, and then the bulk of the work that went into the framework was an attempt to come up with a series of actions that the entire county could embrace cooperatively. And this was, I got to say, this was a wonderful thing to see, kind of the staff from all six jurisdictions getting together, and there was some pretty, pretty fine wordsmithing in terms of going into what are the actions that everybody, all six jurisdictions, could feel comfortable committing to. And so this is divided into six goals, and I'll review them briefly. The first one, because it's frankly the most significant, is transportation. It's the largest, largest segment of our emissions profile. It's also the hardest to manage, and there's a lot of different elements in the, so under transportation, there's 14 or 15 specific kinds of actions that we see as a way to reduce our greenhouse gas profile. The second area is buildings and energy, which is, if transportation is over 50 percent, buildings and energy across the county is probably about 30 percent. It's not as large, but in a way, it's, the reduction strategies are a little easier to grasp. Frankly, you know, weather stripping houses, making buildings more energy efficient is something that's, that's a lot more manageable than trying to change our whole transportation, how we get around transportation system. But real gains are possible there. The third area is solid waste, reducing solid waste. Fourth is agricultural issues. Fifth is what can, how can we actually, through changing behaviors and changing community awareness? And finally, even though it's a small portion, it can be significant, is what can actual local government operations accomplish? That's, the cities and the towns and the county all have buildings, they all have fleets, and frankly, they're, they can model and be, kind of show leadership in the community. So there's a whole area around that. So all together in those six areas, there's 53 actions that are contained in the framework that, again, represent the, at this point, the considered agreement of all six jurisdictions. So we have the draft framework. We're now, what's, we're now in the process of kind of having conversations like this up and down the valley. Excuse me. We're having three open, public conversations about it, later on this month, starting out in American Canyon on the 14th. We'll have one in St. Helena on April 15th, one in the City of Napa on April 28th. And as I mentioned, following those, we'll come back to NCTPA with their, with the considered considerations from all these groups, all these conversations, and then have a conversation about, well, what next? Which, what do each, what does each jurisdiction wish to do at this point? NCTPA is happy to continue to assist in whatever ways the jurisdictions wish us to in a coordinating role. So that's, as fast as I could, I think, an introduction to a fairly complex issue, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Elliot. Does council have any questions for Elliot? Councilmember Chilton?
I think the, you're right, this is a highly complex issue. I think what's most interesting about what you said, and I'm assuming that this is no longer the climate action plan.
Correct.
You know, one of my great concerns about the way legislation in the whole world seems to be going is we try to legislate an outcome and have no path by which to get there. We do that with climate change and healthcare and everything else. We just say, let's put some regulatory bodies in place, and they can figure it out, surely. My concern all along has been the process usurping local control over land use decisions. And obviously, this climate action plan becoming a, we call it a binding document, is a fairly substantive change from, from even over the past year or two, we've talked about goals, and there's no set, you know, requirements or penalties, shall we say. I, you know, I continue to strongly support the Town of Yountville taking a leadership role in being an environmental leader. You know, I, I think some of the issues when it comes to global warming, and you talked about international treaties, I think that's getting more complex rather than less complex. But I think that we live in a, in a area that depends on the environment, we live in agriculture area, we live in a beautiful area, and we should do whatever we can to sustain that, and make it better. I get concerned when I hear regional strategies and the things that people expect this jurisdiction, this council to be able to control, that this process has the potential to go down the road of saying, you know what, we should all be honest, density is the answer to many of the, many of the transportation issues, living closer to where you are. So, yeah, I know you don't want a fourplex on Jefferson Street, but state law says you have to have it, so you can't turn it down for that. Those kind of things, I think people have to remember and look down the road for. My other concern is, you mentioned CARB, the California Air Resources Board, I think is the agency that's tasked by the state to fix the state's responsibility in all of this. We're in the unique position of having a very large portion of our greenhouse gas come from a state facility, which we have absolutely no regulatory control over. And I think that that message to the state of we're being counted for something that they, basically said they're not going to fix because they're doing it other ways, that creates some problems. So when we're in goals, I'm for it, and when we're starting to get into these caps, I think that we really need to have a local plan. And I know the whole goal of the NCTPA was to not have to go through all the legwork, which I think your efforts have saved a tremendous amount of time and effort, just given the framework for it. But if this council is going to adopt something like that, which we probably have to, we really should take into account some very unique local conditions.
If I could, there's an interesting provision of this Sustainable Community Strategy, and of course, as you can imagine, you know, the local jurisdictions were very clear about, you know, maintaining and asserting the local land use authority issues. And so the way in which the SB 375 is written is that the Sustainable Community Strategy is required to meet its goals while, in full respect of local general plans. And there is an additional And there is an additional provision in SB 375 says that if you can't meet your state mandated target in that way, then you have to come up with what's called an alternative community strategy. So there's, there's, so there's, and in the Bay Area, in the regional conversations, they, there's a very strong commitment to actually reach whatever target they get as a formal sustainable community strategy. That means that there, there's a lot of, a lot of kind of commitment to work this through in such a way that, that all the local land use general plans are accommodated.
Just one last question, hopefully it's easy. What board or agency in the Bay Area is the ultimate arbiter of, we've had these negotiations, you don't like it, but sorry, we're going to vote and you lose five to four. Is that, who is that?
There's actually, it's not actually a new group, but it's a group that has been in existence, but has been kind of empowered as the, as the administrative group for this. It's called the Joint Policy Committee. And the joint is, there is the four regional state agencies, which is A-BAG, MTC, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which is the regional portion of the, of the state air board, and the Bay Conservation and Development Commission. They now have this Joint Policy Committee, which has representation from all four of those boards, and they are the, that's the place in which the, the policies are being adopted. That's, that is the group that will, you know, be the forum for the adoption of this Sustainable Community Strategy.
I can see my concern.
Yes.
We elect a county supervisor who has five members who elect one person to Air Quality Management District, who then, as a board, elects one person to a joint powers agreement that is so far removed.
There's also, there's also, again, they've tried to recognize that you have 101 cities in nine counties, so 110 jurisdictions here. They, I think they're doing actually a fairly respectable and aggressive effort to involve kind of local governments, the local decision makers. They, there is a, they will have the first meeting of what they're calling, I forget. There's two levels of advisory staff groups to that, one of which is, will be represented by, by town and city manager and county, town managers and county executives from each county. There'll be also another group that will be represented by the congestion management agencies like NCTPA and planning directors. So I'll be on this kind of staff working group along with Hillary Gilman from the county's planning, who has been kind of deputized by all our planning directors to represent Napa County's interests. So it is a kind of a, kind of a representative process in that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions for Elliot? Vice Mayor?
I do, I do just want to follow up. I think Councilmember Chilton gave a very thorough and accurate depiction of some of the concerns that I have too. Just one thought, if we could eliminate all these boards driving all over the Bay Area, we'd really significantly reduce our greenhouse gas. Just two other points I wanted to make, I think you touched on it, or maybe Sandra, you did, where we don't know what the end target is. It hasn't been set, it's not going to be set for three years, if then. There's already an effort in and around Sacramento throughout the state to even eliminate AB 32 altogether, so this could be much to do about nothing. But I think it gets to the core point of, we should be acting responsibly and making steps that are positively impactful locally, regardless of what AB 32 or, or any of the other acronyms we're talking about are telling us to do. But the other concern I have is there's no funding support for any of this. State mandates say now you have to comply with your, you know, state mandated levels of reduction, have at it. We, we're not going to tell you how to do it, but you have to do it. And we're not going to support you while you do it, but you have to do it. So I think that's going to be one of the most significant hurdles, because there are not funding opportunities sitting out there like there used to be to get creative, and it costs money to get responsible. So I think it's going to be a real challenge.
No, you're right. And in a way, that's been part of the ongoing discussion with the NCTPA board is, to whatever degree we can actually work cooperatively to create, even for the next phase, can we do some kind of template so that every, every city and town does not have to go and hire its own consultant and do its own studies and, you know, draft its own potential regulatory regime? We are hoping that, that when we go through, once we get through this cycle, we'll be able to identify a way in which, at least certain dimensions of it, it'll be, again, having, again, recognizing that we want to have it be customizable, but we also want to see, how can we, how can we cooperate with it? And see if we can, we can leverage some of our, some of the general purpose funding that we may be able to access for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dutton, any questions?
No.
Thank you, Elliot. Is there anyone from the public have any questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Where are we, item?
Item 12.
Item, that's, item 12, bus stop improvement grant. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mayor Sossman and counsel. This is an item that we've discussed before. As you may recall, there was an NCTPA grant for $69,000 for bus stop improvements. This was brought before you at the January 19th meeting. I lay out in the staff report the existing bus stops, there's a map attached to the staff report. Also, this was taken to the Transportation Advisory Committee, February 18th, March 18th. It was also taken to the Parks and Community Services Commission on March 18th. And the draft minutes from both of those meetings are attached to the staff report, and some of you attended the Parks and Community Services meetings, so, you know. Generally, in town, the bus stops are spaced fairly well, about two blocks apart. Their only gap is between Mulberry at the post office and Madison at the north end of town. So this was an item that was discussed with the commissions, committees, with the public, and we really haven't come up with any consensus on a location for, for a bus stop in the area between Humboldt and Weber. So it was proposed by the Transportation Advisory Committee to recommend a bus stop in this area. Parks and Community Services Commission did not want a bus stop at Vandeler Park, so that recommendation has been taken out of the recommendations in the resolution that's attached to your staff report. There were three alternative locations looked at, at Humboldt, at Vandeler Park, and at Because there was no consensus at this time, what we'd like to do is to table that until we get some interest in a bus stop location and some consensus on a location in that area. This is just for the northbound bus. So with the resolution before you, there's six or eight recommendations that we'd like to have you adopt so that we can move forward with an implementation plan for this grant and get it constructed by September so we can get the grant funding. So going through that was to, some of these you'll recognize, was eliminate the bus stop on the west side of Washington at Yount Street, that's a whistle stop, to move the bus shelter from that location to the bus stop on the west side of Washington Street at Humboldt in front of the Vintage Inn, to install a semi-seat, which you've seen a picture of in front of Gordon's up by Madison, to install a bus shelter at the bus stop in front of West America Bank, which is about 250 feet north of California Street, to add the standard bus stop benches at two of the stops that are mentioned there, to add this town standards bus stop bench at the bus stop on the east side of Washington Street in front of the undeveloped property, undeveloped property by the Ranch Market and Sorrento, and the one about, that's about 350 feet south of Mulberry, and the other ones are at the post office, to update the, and install signage, garbage receptacles, recycling receptacles at the bus stops, and to update the traffic and circulation study from 2005 in the areas of Washington Street between Humboldt and Madison, to see if there's enough grant, if there is enough grant funding to look at the traffic in this area, essentially for parking, right turn, left turn, that type of thing. So that's the proposal tonight before you, and if there's any questions, I can answer those now.
Does counsel have any questions for staff? Councilmember Muller?
I have a question about a standard bus stop bench. It seems like there's locations that have shelters and benches, and now you want to rip some of those benches out and put in a standard bus stop bench. So can you tell me what a standard bus stop bench is, please?
Sure. If you've noticed that the bus stops along Velagio on the west side of Washington Street, there's a metal bench, black, it's sort of a mesh, and those would be, that is the standard. What we want to do is put those at, at each of the bus stops. Some of the bus stops have like a wooden bench, and so what's proposed is to remove some of those existing benches and put in the metal benches.
Why?
One, to be consistent and, such as to uniform for the, all the bus shelters and bus stops.
Any more questions? Councilmember Dutton?
I'm just curious, do you anticipate that with this $69,000, you can do all of those things?
Yes.
Possibly not, or a portion of number eight?
At this time, yeah, it looks like we can do all the, everything that's proposed here. The traffic circulation study, that's, you know, if we keep it small, we can probably keep it within the budget.
If I would, I would like to comment on Councilmember Muller's. One of the things we're also looking at, the metal mesh actually is less maintenance and less intensive, and we do get some complaints from riders and citizens occasionally about splinters from the wood bench. So again, I would also point out that had the town not been recipient of the grant, and again, the focus of this grant is to improve our bus stops, so this is not town general fund money. I don't want to think that, I understand, I think, the comment that Councilmember Muller was that, why would we replace a serviceable bench in today's market? And part of it is this is particular funding structure, and there is some long-term savings by making those changes in benches. And town staff is spending more time looking at how we go about and do things, because sometimes an item may cost $5 more, but its long-term maintenance cost and durability results in a lower lifecycle cost. So I, I do acknowledge, I think, your comment and your concern, I think that's appropriate.
Well, I'm, actually, I mean, I can understand a metal bench will probably last longer than a wood bench, but I, I'm more puzzled by why you want to remove a shelter in one spot and then add a shelter in another spot. And I appreciate it's a grant, but I still think it's somebody's money, even though it's not our money, it is our money, so.
No, I can, and now let me, prior, going back, the council established where you wanted your bus stop locations, and you told staff that the direction that you gave was to eliminate the stop at Washington and Yount. That has a shelter. So staff is trying to be respectful of the money that we've spent and recover most of that by relocating that shelter to a location that doesn't, and then building a new shelter at stops that do not have a shelter. The location up by Gordon's is not able to support a standard town design bus stop, and that's where the semi-seat. So I think that's a very good question, and, you know, if you go back several months ago, that's when the council approved where the permanent bus stop routes will be.
Can I follow up on that one more time? Well, then, what it says here is that you're not, what you want to do is in front of the Vintage Inn, you want to, it doesn't have a shelter, so you want to add a shelter. But this is not in front of the whistle stop and across from Yount, it has a shelter, but you just want to eliminate the shelter only.
No, the whole stop goes away.
That's not what it says.
That's because you've already taken an action to tell us to eliminate that bus stop. So this is the attempt to recycle that, you know, that bus shelter. There will be no stop at that location once this action is completed. So I apologize if there's any lack of clarity on that outcome.
Any more questions? Councilmember Dutton?
I just have a comment, I mean, and I think I agree with everything here, but, and I know you went back and forth, you know, about the stop in, in front of the real estate office and Vandeler and that type of thing. And probably inappropriate, I still think, the intersection at Humboldt and Washington, exiting Humboldt is dangerous. And whether there's a bus there or cars parked there, depending on the type of cars, somebody's going to get it there one of these days, good. And I just hope we're not on the hook for anything there. I mean, if there's, occasionally, there's a big SUV parked there and it's just a crap shoot leave of that thing, if you want to go out, you better, you better hope nobody's coming up the street there, because you can't get out far enough to see it till it's too late. So, I don't know, I mean, that's a topic for a different story. That was one of my, actually, I was happy with that maybe the bus stop there, at least it eliminated when the bus was, all the time the bus wasn't there, we wouldn't have to worry about that intersection. But I certainly see the earlier's point of view there, but somehow that is still a very dangerous stop.
Questions for staff? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I just want to make it clear, because I know there are people in the audience that are here with great concern about the concept that is no longer on the table, I want to make sure that's clear, that it's no longer on the table, to put a bus stop in or at Vandeler Park. That's stated here in the staff report, but I want to just, granted, if you disagree with me, speak now, please, but that is correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So that, that said, and we are not proposing at this time to put one in front of Gates Realty.
Correct.
So basically, after hearing, because I know that's where the Parks and Community Services discussion was, basically, after measuring the distances to the existing or soon to be existing bus stops, their recommendation was, those are sufficient to support the need for that part of town, at least right now. That was basically the conversation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's what's led us to trying to complete some of these other actions about moving shelters, and this again is, is restricted money, we're not using our own money, this is money that the state or federal government is providing us to improve our transportation situation. If we don't use it for these projects, we give it back.
Correct.
And I will also point out that this is not, the items before you are not things that are not in your CIP. The town council has previously adopted the goal of erecting a shelter over all of your bus stops. We took a slight deviation when it wasn't clear that we had a uniform agreement on where all the bus stops should be, so we took some time out to finalize where we thought the bus stops should go, which is why we have seven out of eight, pretty well firm now. And with this program, you will have shelters at the vast majority of those, and you'll have the semi-seat up on the northbound location. So it will go a long ways towards implementing the council's goal of having a shelter over each of its designated bus stops.
Any questions? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this matter this evening?
Good evening. My name's Lee Hart, I'll do a 1901 Columbar and White. And it's probably been overstated, but I am definitely opposed to a bus stop inside Vandeler Park. There's a lot of reasons for that that I don't want to take the time to go into now. But one thing that's kind of troubling is that Mr. Watchwords comments that this subject is going to be tabled, which means it could pop up in the future at any time, and so I feel like I got a look over my shoulder. And I really don't see any conditions changing on Washington Street on the east side in the next 15 years, as far as acquisition of land by the town or anything like that. So at any rate, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Bus stops? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to counsel for further discussion and our action. Councilmember Muller?
I'd just like to make sure that we put some provision in here that we're going to be going after this grant. Things are always popping back, it's like, well, we got it, now we're another $20,000 short. So I'd like some provisions that this is it, we're going to use it for the grant, and it's not going to, we're not going to get any surprises later. And the other thing, I agree, I don't know what we can do, but I think this is plenty of bus stops. I think I'd like to say we don't need any more bus stops or any of our other money going towards bus stops. So I'd like to do that, and otherwise, I'm fine.
Councilmember Chilton?
I just want to say that I, you know, we've talked about this a lot more than when we should talk about bus stops, it seems like. But, you know, there's been some good feedback, some good ideas. I think that some of the ideas put forward, which were not amenable to a lot of people... I think that some of the ideas put forward, which were not amenable to a lot of people, they're ideas that should be put forward, people can react to them, the process has clearly worked. I think Vandeleer, I completely agree with that. I think it was a, you know, it was a suggestion to look at the various options, and I'm pretty sure there's zero support out there. So it could pop up, but it's not going to. I would also say, I, you know, the only thing that I think is funny about this, and I think Councilmember Muller made the comment, this is, this is grant money. And I feel like we're in this very weird time right now, where, you know, budgets are tight, we're trying to, to really, you know, hone in on the things that are most important. And then we get grant money for things that feel purely optional and, and not that important in the whole scale of things. But either you take the money, or somebody else is going to spend it, and we can knock a couple of things off. So is this where I would want to spend $69,000 the most? Not really. Same thing with the bike path. There's, there's other things that I'd rather spend $730,000 on, but it'll be good to have, it's something we want, and in these very odd times, we're going to get them.
Councilmember Dutton?
Well, I agree with what I've heard there before, but I look at it more like, well, maybe this is just sort of averaging out what we've already spent. I've always said that bus stop shelters are ridiculously overpriced. I just, I will never in my life understand $30,000 to build a bus stop. So I look at this as, well, we got one for free, so we average that in to what we spent before, a lot like the bike path and the other paths we sent. Take the money and do what we can, but I'm glad we don't have to pay for this one, believe me.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to take a slightly different perspective on this. First of all, thanks to staff for their responsiveness. I know there were several people who were really concerned, as Councilmember Chilton mentioned, with some of the suggestions, but I think the process did work, and I appreciate your responsiveness to that. But I also, especially after hearing the Park and Community Services Committee discuss this, we need to remember also, we do have a population of folks that do not drive, or are mobility challenged, that do rely on, on the bus service. And so I think that's what we have been trying to do, is to scatter these sites as efficiently and effectively as we can. One of the other topics of discussion was the new affordable housing units on Fennel Road, and how they would be in proximity to the existing or proposed new sites. And that was really driving a lot of the interest to have that bus stop in the middle of town. You know, we have out-of-town workers that come here that use the bus, we have residents that go out of town for their jobs that use the bus. So I don't think these are unnecessary. I don't think we have too many. I think it's, you know, I'd just like to praise staff for working, it's a difficult stretch on Washington. Once you start to look at that street and try to figure out the parameters you need for these stops, and to, and to spread them out between public and private space, it's, it's really challenging. So I would commend you for doing that. I think it makes sense to shelter all of them, especially with grant money. I would agree that we would normally put this off, but we have this opportunity, and I think we're, we'd be foolish not to take it.
Thank you for your comments. I agree. We discussed this item. I think we have enough bus stops in town. We're a walking town. There's very short distance between bus stops. Of course, I would like to see all of our bus stops improved, and this grant funding is going to make that possible. So with that, is anybody willing to make a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution 2872-10, approving the recommendations for a bus stop grant implementation plan and approving a budget adjustment number 2009-10-09.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
No? Opposed? None that motion carries? Thank you. Item 13, noise ordinance amendment. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. This item is a continuation of the March 2nd first reading of the amendments that are proposed to the noise control regulations that are contained in Chapter 8.04 of the municipal code. At that March 2nd meeting, the council had commented on the draft and had several items that they wanted responded to, and those items included that the seasonal adjustment to extended hours for during the summer months are specified as June 1st to September 30th. And this is where the night, definition of night standards coincide with sunset, but may extend to one hour past sunset, but not later than 10:00 PM. The second is eliminate the reference to disallowing the inclusion of broadcasting radio stations, and this is found in the Sound Amplification Permit section, where there had originally been a prohibition against having radio stations broadcast as part of the permit, except for special occasions that are specifically approved. The third is that the council did highlight the importance of enforcing the ordinance, and we will, staff will be meeting with the sheriff, and there'll be training on the noise measurement equipment, and the equipment will be available to the sheriff. And so we intend to keep up on that and ensure that the new provisions and the standards will be enforced with the new equipment. In the exemptions section, the council was interested in adding a number of exemptions that acknowledge existing activities of established entitlement or service activities that go on in the town. And that's found now in Section F, where there's 11 areas that we've added to that exemption section, including deliveries to commercial and residential moving activities within residential areas, occasional social gatherings within residential areas within daylight, daytime hours, street and parking lot sweeping, garbage recycling, green waste collection, hot air balloon launches and low-level operations, religious events, including chimes and bells and other noise associated with the religious institutions, special events, and those uses that within their use permit allow for noise levels to be exceeded on certain occasions. Town, state, federal, and public utility projects and activities, that usually be construction work associated with those agencies. And then activities that occur at the schools, athletic fields, playgrounds, parks, tennis courts, public recreation facilities, and the community center. Additionally, one of the comments was the, in the exemptions, or excuse me, the staff work with the restaurants and Upper Valley disposal and recycling to reach acceptable levels of operational noise, and there was a comment made about wine bottle disposal occurring at a very late hour or very early hour. Trash pickup hours and have the potential to produce nuisance noise, depending on the location. So we'll be meeting with those agencies and businesses to discuss that. And last, there was a desire to have a chart that describes decibel levels as examples within the ordinance, so that's been included. So those provisions have been included within the draft ordinance, and we are back to discussion of it and first reading. If you have any questions, I could answer at this time.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Councilmember Muller?
On that long list of exceptions you just talked about, item I, use permits, any use for which a use permit has been issued by the town that specifically allows noise levels to be exceeded. What is an example of a use permit where someone can make all the noise they want?
Well, it's not all the noise, but it, for, an example would be a wine tasting room typically has special events. Three is the usual number.
But why isn't that covered under special event, the one right above?
Well, it's, it's different than a special event, which is a permit that is not associated with a business that has a use permit. A nonprofit has a picnic, or a, there's a bike ride, or...
Let me try and help you on this one.
Okay.
When you guys approve the conditional use permit, you lay those conditions out. So therefore, while they may have a compliance reporting, that's their permission to have those things are in what is called the conditional use permit. So that's why they're written as a use permit. Somebody else that's external to that would have to come and ask for a special event. So that's just the difference. You allow that, and you put the regulatory elements into the conditional use permit that the council approves when an applicant brings that use, as opposed to, you know, a nonprofit group that wants to do a one-day special event or something like that. So it's just a definition. We might, it might be helpful to put conditional use permit and add the word conditional in front of that.
Yeah, I think that, that would help a lot, because I just don't see why someone should be able to exceed our noise.
And they're not. Again, you guys, in your conditional use permits, you guys are very explicit, but what we're trying to say here is, in that approval process, there are projects and applications that the councils allowed a certain, something to occur, and if they have that permission granted by the council, then they're allowed to do that. Otherwise, they're not. Rule number one is, show us the permit, and if you can't, then you can't do it.
Thank you. That will work.
Any more questions for staff? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this matter this evening? Noise ordinance. All right. Seeing none, bring it back to council for further discussion or action. Council?
I'm fine, as long as we add conditional into item I, which seems to be under Section F, which also seems to be odd, but we haven't quite got that numbered right, but other than that, that's it.
Mine's got something different.
Some page, eight out of 10.
We've got a different number in the scheme.
Minor number.
Number F9.
Uh...
Yours is different.
I'll be doggone.
I'm not done.
If that's your old, there are both, the staff reports from both meetings, if you have those. If you have any...
Anyway, on that one... It should be D.
D? And I actually...
So it's attachment A, correct?
I think you need to allow staff, there's a slight programming, I think we need to, if you can in your motion, allow us to correct what would look like an alphabetizing. It looks like it went on auto, because it looks to me like when it was inserted, 804-30 on page seven should be an A and a B, and then 804040 should start again with an A and a B. So if you'll allow staff to make that minor...
Thank you, that'll work.
Minor layout correction.
I, I agree with the inclusion of the word conditional under Section F, part I, and I, I want to thank staff, because the big thing that we were missing last time, to me, is sort of the unique conditions that we have in Yountville. You know, nothing's perfect. We live in a town, we don't live in, in the middle of a ranch where there's nothing around us, so we do have to, we do have to account for those things. So this is a great improvement, and I support it.
Any more comments, discussion? May I have a motion?
I move to approve, introduce, and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 386-10, amending the town of Yountville Municipal Code, Section 8.04 Noise Control Regulations to include measurable standards.
Do you want to waive the reading, or do you want to read it?
I don't want to read it. I won't waive the reading.
Second? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Dutton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Mayor Saucerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. I am 14. Alcohol beverage, alcoholic beverage control, ABC change in state law. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. The new, the new ABC law went into effect at the beginning of this year, and it permits wine tasting rooms to serve wine by the glass and the bottle for consumption on the premises. And this will apply in town to requests by new wine tasting rooms to locate here, as well as requests by existing proprietors who wish to expand the rights under their existing use permits. And in recent years, the set town is seeing an increased interest in and proliferation of wine tasting rooms. And staff receives a level of interest from these proprietors on a weekly basis, so it's The proliferation is due in part to Yountville being a tourist economy and a successful one, as well as the efficient aggregation of these establishments near one another, and the pedestrian orientation of town. And what's created is really an iconic wine country experience that is rather unique to Yountville. This has created a level of concern on behalf of some residents that this wine tasting environment creates a monolithic environment from one end of town to the next, and this could become a wine lounge or wine bar environment with this new ABC law. In response to the proliferation of wine tasting rooms and the loss of retail space, the town enacted a retail diversity policy recently, and that provides that 25% of the floor space of new tasting rooms in towns must be devoted to a non-wine-related retail use. And while this program is still in its infancy, we have three tasting rooms that are approved under this new standard. But I think it's also important to note that many of the existing wine tasting rooms before this policy went into effect voluntarily included a rich and diverse retail base, and there are several of those. So the question for the council is, does this, are the number of wine tasting rooms in town overdone, and is this overly saturated within Yountville? And if it is, should the town create standards and a structure for this new and expanded use that could be incorporated into a new policy? And the first category of wine tasting rooms are the new rooms that haven't yet located. And the town could determine that because of this monolithic culture and this oversaturation of wine tasting rooms, that a cap on the number of rooms is appropriate. And that could be the 11 that are currently in place because they're, because of the determination of oversaturation, or it could provide room for a slight expansion. Alternatively, the town could approve new wine tasting rooms if a proprietor were to voluntarily waive the right to serve wine by the glass or bottle, and this agreement were reached before the use permit decision was decided on. And this could be achieved through a memorandum of understanding. If the town doesn't elect either of those two routes, it could continue to review discretionary permits on a case-by-case basis and condition projects based on their impacts. And one of the options open to council is to change the parking standards for this new hybrid use. Currently, the town applies a commercial retail standard of one stall for every 250 square feet of floor area, and that does allow some amount of seating. But this hybrid use could apply a new restaurant standard of one stall for every four seats, and it is likely that that would increase the number of stalls required, and it would bring the supply and demand more in line with one another. The town could condition the hours of operation and more stringently limit the hours, especially where there are outdoor uses, or these are in close proximity to residential, and because of the wine consumption, require a closing time of 5:00 PM or earlier. The council could limit the areas for wine consumption to an exclusive use area, or prohibit the consumption outdoors. And it could put limits on the preparation and service of food. And small bites are typically used to enhance the wine tasting experience, and these are provided as part of a wine and food pairing. In town, they are treated differently for different wine tasting rooms, depending upon, for example, if they have a grease interceptor, so that they can prepare these small daily food pairings, or whether they're conditioned to be only allowed by off-site caterers. And we are receiving some indication that tasting rooms would like to expand the level of food service to include a tapas-style plate that is an additional item for sale in addition to the wine tasting itself. in addition to the wine tasting itself. Special events offer another option to restrict the consumption of wine. Staff notes that there is an enforcement issue if different standards were to apply to the wine tasting and the wine consumption uses. That would be difficult for staff to tell what's going on, at what time, for hours, locations, any number of things. And then it might be more appropriate to rein in the operational standards for the wine tasting use because of the impacts of the consumption use by the wine or the glass. The second category are the existing wine tasting rooms, and staff has received interest by, by two existing wine tasting rooms to expand this privilege. We've also had some indication that they'd like to sell food, that they would be interested in allowing acoustic music, that they would like to have an outdoor tasting bar. And so it shows the example of what tasting rooms may want to do, and that's just a sampling of some of them. We don't know what they all intend to do, based on this new ABC law. It's important to note that all of the approved wine tasting rooms in town were done under permits that restricted the sale of wine by the glass or the bottle, and that was either by referencing that consumption and sales of wine shall conform to ABC rules and regulations in ta, in effect at the time of the approval for wine tasting only, or ones that condition, or conditions that expressly prohibit the sale of wine by the bottle or the glass. So these proprietors could not unilaterally and automatically modify their business model to be consistent with the new ABC privileges, because that would be inconsistent with and not compatible with their use permits. So staff is suggesting a process where these proprietors seek use permit amendments if they want to expand their wine tasting privileges. And staff is in the process of drafting a letter to each of the 11 wine tasting rooms, letting them know of this requirement. The process would be the typical application process, where an application is submitted, processing fee deposit is made, the staff review is conducted, and public notice and public hearing before the council is conducted. And at that hearing, the town council would have leeway in imposing conditions on these existing permits. And they could even be more restrictive than the current entitlement allows if this wine consumption use is deemed to have an impact. So what we are looking for is town council discussion and feedback, so staff can advise existing permit holders and potential applicants on this new ABC law.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Does council have any questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Chilton?
I actually don't have any questions for Sandra. I want to ask our town attorney. And I, in your discussion and analysis of this issue, I always love when it says attorney client privilege on a public document. I always think that's funny. It talks about the ABC, or AB 2004, talks about that the town may exercise land use regulatory authority over wine tasting rooms, but only, quote, "to the extent the authority may restrict but not eliminate these privileges." And I guess that goes to my question of, there's two things. One is new tasting rooms, the second one is existing ones. If we have said in there that you may not serve wine by the glass, and this law says that we may restrict but not eliminate, is that an elimination of that privilege that the state has given a tasting room? And are we therefore left with just trying to make it really hard to do it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The, the language that's presented in the staff report in the bill is actually very challenging to interpret. It's not really clear how they answer that question based on the language. There is, and with that ambiguity, we need to look at the legislative history and how that language came about. And there's authority in the legislative history which shows that the drafters intended that, in that situation, the, the place that already existed under the prior rules would come back to have their CUP amended, or have the local land use regulations amended to allow them to exercise all the rights that the new legislation gave them. So that's, that's one reason why we would recommend, that's the approach that the town should take. The other reason being that, in general, legislation is considered to apply prospectively, not retroactively, and so therefore, this would be, you know, an argument, the argument would be that this would be something that would apply only to new tasting rooms, not to pre-existing ones. The problem with that is that it is ambiguous, and so, you know, there's room for, for discussion on each side. So looking at all those issues, the recommendation that we would have is, any pre-existing tasting room that would like to exercise all the rights under the new legislation would file an application for amendment of his use permit to, to allow that. And then during that process of amending the use permit, it would, it would be an opportunity, if there's a basis for it, to add other conditions to address any of the, the new impacts that might arise from having that more of a full-service type of use.
Have any more questions?
So, since I've been on the council, the concept of a tasting room selling by the glass, one of the, I remember a winemaker being here making that comment, and we all kind of chuckled when he said it, because that was a big faux pas, to make a comment about wine by the glass. Do you believe that we can continue an explicit policy that says, if you're a tasting room only, not a restaurant, and then we have to define maybe what a restaurant means, that we can continue to have that policy?
Well, you know, under...
No, it's vague.
Under this legislation, as we would, our recommendation would be that they should be allowed to exercise all the rights, which would include the sale for onsite and actually for offsite consumption. That doesn't mean that they may operate as a restaurant. You know, there could be quite a good number of conditions that would control, you know, the operations. But the best, I think our recommendation is the best interpretation that we can make of the legislation that's currently drafted.
And I want to go back to your overarching, this is the discretionary conditional use permit, and the council has its prerogative under its police powers to establish the appropriate use. And that's why in our community, they aren't all the same. You have different site locations, different hours of operation. Food service is one of those areas, whether it's there, how long it goes, what the nature is, certainly within the town council's prerogative. Parking standards, as staff has indicated to you, currently tasting rooms are treated as a retail establishment and not a bar slash restaurant. And a concern that's been expressed by some in the business community is, will that change the parking distribution? Or will somebody now want to be there and they camp out three, four years? I will also tell you in conversations we've had, that not everybody in the wine tasting community is all excited about this particular type, and it doesn't necessarily fit some of their business models. But what I think we've got to look at is, if they want to do it, we're going to suggest the process that has been identified. We'll put everything back on the table, we'll look at it, we'll assess parking, we'll look at the hours of operation, we'll see what it is they propose, and write up a full detailed analysis. And that gives them their opportunity to do it. Going forward, you have a different question, because as a conditional use permit, the town always has the right to say no. At any point. You don't have to have a policy. And what we're trying to, to work with is understanding, you know, the council has said, "We understand wine tasting can be a very important business component in our community," component, I should say. So we're not necessarily opposed to tasting rooms. That's why we've worked hard to develop the retail diversity component. What we are concerned about is the proliferation of what would be considered the wine bar approach. So what we're looking at is basically a two-stepped approach, which would be, somebody that comes in and says, "I'm interested in doing this, I understand the community's concerns, the community's values." I'll enter into some type of binding agreement with the town, and then at a later date process. And by virtue of that, they're allowed to do whatever ABC would let them, but we have another understanding and agreement that's also equally enforceable, that says you can't do that, and if you do that, we lay out the consequences in there. So I think what we're trying to do is provide a compromise, given the fact that the language really is, I would say amongst the most poorly written, I don't know how a third grader could figure out what that paragraph means. But that's kind of where we're at. We do understand the sensitivity to both the economy in this community, to the workforce, and also to the residents that live here and the quality of life as they perceive it. It's not an easy, this is not an easy, one-size-fits-all understanding.
Any more questions for staff? Councilmember Dutton, any questions?
No, that was primarily mine, as far as, if they want to, you know, proceed with this, then they would have to come for an amendment to their, you know, whole, that's fine.
Vice Mayor, you have specific questions?
I do, and I'm not sure if it's best for Sandra or our town attorney. Two questions. One is, is the restaurant definition necessarily triggered as soon as we start, if we were to allow food service onsite? And at what point would food service constitute restaurant use? Is it table service? Is it the type of food? Is it hot food? Do we have a definition there?
We don't have clear definitions there. It's something that we would want to create based on this new model and what we envision the impact to be, so I imagine a new parking standard entirely.
I'm, I'm not only worried about the parking standard, I'm worried about the zoning. If, if one of these tasting rooms is in an area that is prohibiting restaurant use, would food service and consumption on that side then violate the zoning?
Here's what I want to go back to, I'm going to, it's Planning Land Use 101. This is called, council has a discretionary conditional use permit. So if the council feels that it walks, talks, looks like a restaurant duck, then it looks like a duck, and the council says no. So I think that's, what I'm trying to say is, you're going to make that call, and whether you think food service of any type, small bites, light appetizers, that's the discretionary call, because you can look at it and say, "This walks, talks, looks like a restaurant, not a tasting room," or "A tasting room masquerading as a restaurant." So that's clearly within the council's purview under a conditional use permit. And I think it's a very appropriate concern, is it's somebody trying to create a restaurant in a space that we weren't intending it to be a restaurant, or vice versa.
Madam Mayor, if I can expand on that, too. The ABC has separate licenses for what's called bona fide restaurants, also, which would, which this type of a sale of wine would not fall under, would be outside of that bona fide restaurant. And basically, it just underscores the point, is that there's full discretion to, to condition and eliminate it from becoming a restaurant type of use.
Not quite as clearly defined in answer as I was hoping for, but thank you. The other goes to the point of, if an existing tasting room comes in to apply for an amendment to their existing conditions, they basically are opening up the door for a new set of rules.
That's correct.
You don't get everything you already get, plus you get something else necessarily. Like if, and parking is one of the easiest to pinpoint, just because you're allowed X spaces to satisfy your parking requirement now, doesn't mean that's fine if you want to start selling by the glass and by the bottle.
That's fair, and I think what we would do is say that staff is going to do a complete analysis, and it would also be incumbent on the applicant to outline their business plan and model, and we would respond to it. But based on that, you know, staff would apply a different parking standard, because it's, it walks, talks, and looks like a wine bar, therefore, it's going to have that type of a parking standard applied to it. And that may have an impact on some of the recommendations that come back to you for condition. I don't want to...
If I could just specify also, I don't want to just get caught up on parking, I'm, I'm considering hours of operation. Right now, if you're open until 9:00 or 10:00 because you're a tasting room, you may be scaled back to 6:00.
My point, right.
Or 5:30.
In the staff report, what we say is, they're going to bring us their model, staff is going to write an analysis, council, again, has discretion, and you're going to establish the criteria for what you want with that business. So you're right, it opens everything back up. They're not automatically guaranteed what they have now, nor are they automatically, you know, is it an assumption that they're not going to have some of the things they have now? But what it's going to say is, we start over, look at what is appropriate for what they're now saying they want to do with that use.
So then the last question I have relates to the last bullet point, just part of your conclusion, about the town has discretion to deny an application on its face, basically. But if that application is granted, we cannot then go and restrict them from selling by the glass and bottle?
That...
So that's what gets to your point of, from here on, any application that's approved has in it that condition, they can sell by the glass and by the bottle. And it's nothing to do with food. None of this, none of this triggers food or special events or anything else.
Take food out. Special events, all those are, all of those are items that the council has allowed at its discretion as a part of the conditional use permit. And you can change that, eliminate it, apply. So, you know, that's why I think what we want people to do is take a careful look at, how does that approach, and what's their business model? And how does that fit?
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for staff?
I, I should say, there was one thing that we kind of overlooked that was in the staff report. Council also has the ability to say, "This is not an issue. We don't really have a problem with wine by the glass." I just want to point that out, because we've all jumped into a conversation. But I do want to say that that's clearly, you know, based on previous council directions, staff clearly understands that. But I think for the public's purpose, they need to understand that that's one of the options, is, you know, council could say, "It's okay to have 26 wine and bar-related establishments in this community."
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter this evening? Anyone? Comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, bring it back to council for further discussion. You know, this, this, this is, this is a pretty significant issue with respect to our tasting rooms in town, because I see it as a, as a tasting issue versus a drinking issue. And if you're going to have people drinking wine in those quantities in your establishment, you have a responsibility to keep them sober, to provide something to mitigate the effects of the alcohol. And then we're talking about expanding on our existing use permits, we're talking about asking for service, food service. And if you're selling food and serving food, then it gets, the area, it gets pretty gray when it comes to distinguishing between a tasting room and a restaurant or a wine bar. So these are some issues that we're going to have to take into consideration with new applications and, and requests for amended use permits. So I'd like to hear the rest of the council's thoughts on these issues. Councilmember Muller?
Well, my, some of my thoughts are going to be very consistent to what they've always been on this area and, in this area. And that is that I, I think we should allow our zoning, which has already been in place for many, many years, to help us drive some of these decisions. Everyone knows, I've always been very opposed to saying that wine tasting in residential scaled commercial, which has been identified as primarily serving locals, is, it's not, in my opinion, and I think the wording in our ordinances, too, it is not a local-serving business. So one thing that we can do to position these tasting rooms is really put them in primary commercial zoning areas, because these could have very far ramifications. I mean, someone might come in and want to tear down Larry's Barber Shop and put a wine tasting room in, somebody could start, you know, tearing down all that housing in between Beard Plaza and Cindy Gates. I mean, if Cindy didn't like the bus stops, wait till she's got a bar next door. You know, there's a lot of things that this could have. So I, I think that allowing our zoning to help, in part, drive these decisions just makes a lot of sense to me. We've got, there's a zoning map there, and we can see the red line all the way in the back room, there's plenty of, you know, PC, primarily commercial, you know, zoning in town to allow these things. So that's my first comment. And, you know, right now, we do have, according to Sandra's table, which is very helpful, thank you, there are three tasting rooms currently in residential scale commercial. We're going to be coming up against this whole issue with Somerson, too, when they come back. But they're there now, but, you know, if they go out, I don't, and this is something Matt can tell me if I'm wrong, they're not going to be permitted by matter of right to always have a tasting room there. If they go... If they go out, we can't allow and make a decision about a new conditional use permit for a new tasting room. Is that correct?
Actually, a little clarification. The use permit runs with the property, so it's, you know, it would run with the property. There is a period, there is a fallow time. In other words, if there's nothing operating within that period, then you can start the clock again. But if any one of our businesses went out and a similar permitted business came in, we do allow the transfer of that use by right.
Okay, well, I think that maybe helps strengthen my argument a little bit. Just so we all are aware, the more wine tasting rooms that we allow in residential scale commercial, it's, you know, it is gonna be a condition as a matter of right for all future ones, too. So we just need to really consider that. And I think we can fall back on our zoning to, to help, really maybe look at those words a little differently than we have before. Also, I, I think that Sandra brought a nice point up in these reports, that our landlords in town can make a lot more money when they rent to a tasting room. And, you know, that, that is their, their right to do that, and that's why we have this retail diversity. What we're getting is, we're allowing these retail, hopefully, it's not always just gonna be retail that the wine tasting business puts in, because they might find it's like, hey, I don't know what to do with this square footage, let's, you know, partner with another retail. So maybe we can help partner that, if retail's coming to town, and maybe we can put some two businesses together and let them know that that possibility exists. If we can leverage the wine tasting rooms in, hopefully, the primary commercial zoning to allow more retail, maybe even increase that retail space, I think that we can get some more bangs for our buck that way. So those are my primary thoughts, is maintaining or even increasing the, the retail in these tasting rooms, as well as really us paying close attention to where, what zoning areas we want to allow these. And maybe after we have some initial discussion, I think it's gonna be a lot more reaction from our tasting rooms, so this'll, I'm expecting, probably be a bit of an iterative process.
Councilmember Chilton?
Well, first of all, you know, I, I look at this as a couple of things. First of all, we've gone through a lot of these issues before. We don't necessarily all agree on each piece of that. I have advocated, and still do so, for increased regulation of tasting rooms. I think the main, the main reason, we're obviously a wine destination, is that we have the demand over the last couple of years, is the county surrounding us is so overregulated, so highly regulated, and we're almost the Wild West of tasting rooms, that the demand is there, and that's why it's there, because there's nowhere else, really up Valley, that you can go in easily, unless you go all the way to Calistoga. And from what I hear, that's not very easy there either. So I do think that some standard hours, a little bit more regulation in terms of a standard playing field, which goes to my belief that, A, we continue to have a tremendous amount of leeway in approving or not approving any type of business. I think we should do that very responsibly. We can't really control the market. I don't think we should leave this process entirely to the conditional use permit, primarily because I don't think that the residents, nor the business community, would have a clear understanding of what the rules of the road are in Yountville. And it puts in the situation that if you're a resident and you are concerned about tasting rooms, you better show up to every single council meeting, because that one night, they might decide to change the precedent and, and write all different rules. So I think that we should have some guidelines. We've never defined what a restaurant is. There's some negatives to doing things like that, and I understand what they are, because people can always backdoor engineer a concept just to get around the technicality of rules. I think this problem, though, wine by the glass and the bottle is easy. And as the vice mayor was talking, I, I kind of wrote them down, there's, there's three different concepts that I see here. One is a tasting room, it's what we think of as a tasting room. You go in, you taste wine, it's a retail outlet, they're trying to sell wine, that's the purpose of it. We all know what that is in that Valley. The next step up, which is by the glass and by the bottle, to me, is a wine bar. And I think that we should define a tasting room in town with certain parking requirements, et cetera, as retail as it is today. If you want to serve glass by the wine, glass by the wine, wine by the glass, I have not had any one, then you are, under our code, a wine bar, and therefore you have to have certain parking restrictions, there's certain hours of the day you can, you can operate, et cetera. And I think the reason that we should very carefully consider wine bars is, we have to consider the tasting room community, which I believe has been very positive to Yountville. We also have to consider the restaurant community, which in many ways, the hotels are important, but the restaurants, as was driven this town into international acclaim. And having people going in, drinking wine by the glass, a major source of revenue and profit, and it's also the fact that they're eating with wine, lessens, I think, the societal impact. So I think a, not an overregulated scheme, but a, a tasting room, a wine bar, and a restaurant definition is something that we should aim for. And I continue to be in favor of tasting rooms with the retail component. I am very concerned by the concept of wine by the glass and wine by the bottle. And I believe that's a very different animal, and we should treat it that way. So that's my general view.
Councilmember Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, really, there's a couple of issues here that I want to bring up. One, I think this, at least to me, and I think a lot of other people, this whole thing came as a complete surprise. I mean, and I really, as I look back at it, and I think, gee, if we knew that this was coming, and obviously, this thing just didn't start on December 31st. I mean, it was, it was brewing for some time, and probably while we were making some of the decisions we were making. Had we known this was coming, I think some of our decisions might have been a little bit different. That being said, it's happened, so how do we deal with it? Well, a couple of the issues that Sandra brought up, and I agree with, and hasn't been yes, mentioned yet, but I do, I, I think maybe we should start talking about, do we have enough? Do we have a cap on it right now? Because when you look at the location of the wine bars, we, or wine tasting rooms, excuse me, that we have now, they're pretty well located throughout town, from south to north. And whether we need some more or not, I think that really has to go over discussion. I think the primary thing, though, and when all of these came before us, I mean, everybody had, we want to do this, we want to do that, we worked with them as best possible. But the one single thing we were very emphatic about, it's a wine tasting sample only. Nowhere did we ever even say that it should be a wine bar. So obviously, for us to deviate from now, now, we may be forced to. Obviously, the law says, well, you can't stop them. Well, I would hope, and I don't know, maybe Steve could tell us that, essentially, up to this point, everything has worked fine. I mean, we have reviews, we have not had any complaints. I don't know who really, at this particular point, monitors whether they're doing it or not. I, for a fact, and I know if you go on a website called Yelp, happened to go in there one day and just brought up one of the rooms, and in there, they were describing what a great time they had there, is they drank four or five bottles of wine. So obviously, that wasn't being sold by the portion. So whether it's being done or not, it, I can't tell you. But in any event, it hasn't caused a problem such as we've had any. I guess my question is, if everybody says, hey, this is fine, we, we like it the way it is, can you have a memorandum of understanding with a particular, you know, wine tasting room that says, hey, just leave it the way it is, we're cool?
I think, to what I would suggest to the council, and not wanting to foreshadow to other council members, but I think at this point, we need to bring back a draft policy, line out, you know, if you're going for this, this is the outline of what you can expect. If you want some of these things, this is how we're going to treat it. And then we can lay in some of those things. So that's certainly, I think, something staff will work on. And I think you've given us a pretty good understanding of how to start with some key elements to write up a policy. And obviously, we've got more comments, but I think that would be my suggestion to you in terms of that. And then, you know, we'll bring that back for your consideration.
Okay, but I, I think overall, just to wrap it up, I think when each one of these rooms came in, I think they said what they wanted, we went back and forth, you know, we gave a little, we didn't give a little on some. But I think, you know, they walked out here, obviously, none of them walked away and said, well, we can't do business here, we're leaving. So they're, they haven't, you know, they were obviously satisfied with the way things were. And I think if they want to come in and change it, then we will have to look at other considerations very seriously. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thanks. Councilmember Chilton actually hit on several of the points that I was gonna address, but, you know, I've, I've supported market control for tasting rooms, and I still do. I, I differ with some of the opinion, I, I very much think that tasting rooms are a local-serving, as well as a visitor-serving business, maybe my 10 wine clubs aside. But I do think that this law change does change the dynamic that we have to address, because as Councilmember Dutton just said, we have been supporting education of wine consumption by the gla, or by the, by the taste, not by the glass, and not by the, not by the bottle. And it does bring a whole new concern that I have. With future review of this, which I'm sure we're gonna have, I'd like to hear a law enforcement perspective, which isn't addressed here. I'd like to hear if there are additional concerns with the additional consumption onsite, if that's something that we need to consider. Certainly parking, and I know it's been mentioned to the council by some members of the public, the parking impacts. I don't necessarily presuppose there will be parking impacts. We're still a walking town, whether we're serving wine by the taste or by the glass. And as Councilmember Dutton mentioned, there are clusters of tasting rooms that are very, very accessible by visitors and residents without driving. So, but I do think if an existing applicant comes here for an amendment, as far as I 'm concerned, that opens up the, the entire permit for review. That's, there's no guarantee of food, there's no guarantee of hours, there's no guarantee of indoor/outdoor use, because this will be a different impact. The wine tasting impact versus a wine bar or wine lounge impact, as far as I'm concerned, there will be a different impact on the, on the immediate area. I don't think restricting to certain zoning areas is the complete answer, because, like I said, I've been supportive of this as a local-serving business to this point. But I do just want to emphasize that if we do have new applicants come forward and we grant those applications, we need to be prepared for those to have full, full operating capabilities according to this law revision. So I'm, I'm not gonna support we put a cap on it, but it's gonna, I'm looking at any future applications with a, kind of a new focus, and, like I said, I don't want to overstate, make this sound like a doomsday scenario, that not even all the existing tasting rooms are going to want to change. But I just want to emphasize the importance that we're gonna give any additional or new impacts the change might have.
I share the same sentiment as most of the council. I apologize, I did not mention the fact that we did get one public comment from Mr. Eric Housley regarding his concerns about wine by the glass and by the bottle. And he likens it to a restaurant, and of course, if you're drinking wine by the glass or a bottle of wine, you're gonna spend more time at that establishment. And then he also felt that they should be, have the same requirements imposed upon the wine bars as restaurants. And that is, you've got someone spending an hour, or hopefully longer, at your establishment consuming a bottle of wine, then you'd need to be able to provide parking for those, those patrons. So that was his primary concern. And there are the elements that staff brought out in the report, which I thought was very well done and very well thought out. For any new wine tasting, or even wine bar, under whatever definition we decide to give it, we will be addressing each of these elements, and that is the hours of operation, the areas for tasting and consumption onsite, preparation and, and service of food onsite, holding of special events, parking requirements. So all those elements come into play with either new tasting rooms, or tasting rooms that decide they want to come before the council and revisit their existing use permits. So I think we've done a very good job of managing and approving the existing tasting rooms in town, and applying all those conditions. And like has been said earlier, there, we've received no complaints, everything seems to be going well. I am not, I'm not in favor of putting a cap on any type of business in town, because the market will drive that demand. And, but I am, and I do, I do support and continue to support that diversity element. And if you're going to open up a tasting room, you're going to be responsible for that retail diversity element, and that's really important. I think this council is not going to overlook that, and it's going to be a requirement, whether it's a tasting lounge, bar, call it whatever you want, we're gonna have to look at some definitions, and I do agree with Councilmember Chilton, it's a good starting point to kind of define those elements and find out, you know, what they mean to the community. But I can support that process of developing an approach to either existing, or amending an existing use permit or accepting new ones. We're going to have to take a very close look at it. And I don't have a problem with wine bars, or wine by the glass, or by the bottle, but we do have to take into consideration all the implications that comes with that, so. Can I have, I have one more comment? Okay. Councilmember Mueller?
When we bring that back, I mean, it, it, can we also reevaluate that any new tasting room we allow, that that space where we allow them is always gonna be conditioned as a matter of right to be a wine, whatever, bar, tasting room in perpetuity? Can we also revisit that aspect?
Well, that's what the state law sort of says we can't do. I mean, if you grant it as a tasting room, unless we've got a different program in place that they voluntarily agree to, then we can't tell them that they can't use that. So that's where having-
I'm just saying, if tasting room A is in location A right now, and tasting room A goes out, and another tasting room wants to come into location A, it's already, we have to always allow that.
The existing, now, if they, the difference, I think, Councilmember Mueller, if they want to come in and do something slightly different than what was done before, then that opens the whole discussion. And that's where you've seen on occasion where we've brought somebody where they want to tweak a patio or do something for a restaurant, and that's opened up review of the conditions. So under that particular case, they would have to do exactly what was in the previous conditions. And if they wanted to amend it, then it would open up to review.
Thanks. Vice Mayor?
Sorry, if I may, two questions for council, I think primarily to consider as we move forward. One is, does this relate in any way to the restrictions on tasting rooms outside of the town limits? If, and I'm not even sure we're gonna have this scenario, but if an applicant has a winery with tasting, and they come to us saying they want to have an in-town tasting space, is there a connection that's automatically grandfathered into their existing winery site that they've got? Are they separate licenses?
Completely separate, because that is a, a new use activity within the incorporated limits of the town of Yountville, so it comes under your land use and planning discretion and police powers.
Okay. And then just the other thing for consideration moving forward is, wineries that are outside the town limits that have county restrictions on their hours of operation and that type of thing, how those match what we're doing in town? Because you can see it, I think Councilmember Dutton mentioned it, people are gonna avoid going to the county, because they come in town, because the restrictions are, are easier to abide by.
Well, I think, before we say that, I think one has to look at, you've approved uses based on how they work in this community, and we have different circumstances and different nuances than the unincorporated county. nuances than the unincorporated county. And you've tried to address specific conditions that reflect the property, location. I mean, we're a walking community with residents, and people can walk, so, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean that everything has to shut at 5:00. Because here's the other thing, you want everything shutting down in town at 5:00, and everybody goes, what the frig do we do when we're in Yountville? I mean, so I think we have to think through some of those things. But again-
And that's all I'm asking. I'm not saying that we should be matching, you know, 4:30 call for an appointment type of stuff.
Absolutely. You have, again, as the council, a lot of discretion with how you approach these use permits when they come before you.
Thank you.
In summary, what I think I'm hearing from the council is that you'd like us to move forward with the communication to the existing wine tasting rooms, that there will be a process for them to amend, and they'll start that. And secondly, we will be working on what I'm going to call a draft policy statement that will come back to the council for your consideration, and then that may, depending on how the council receives those elements, you obviously may tweak them, adjust them, that may lead to an even further potential modification of the ordinances or zoning based on that dialogue. But we'll at least start with a policy statement that will allow you to adopt something that will at least maybe set some guidelines for how we're going to process these things and how we define them. I think putting definitions in is a key element.
So until they come back to amend their CPU, they cannot serve wine by the glass or bottle?
That's our interpretation of the state law.
Councilmember Chilton?
Just a quick question. Bob, Sandra, Steve, have, I mean, it's kind of odd, it's April, have you heard of the county addressing this issue in any way? I mean, I don't know that it opens up the floodgates to every tasting room in the county can serve wine by the glass, but-
The way the law evolved was back in '08, at effective January 1st of '09, was AV2004, it was called, and that was for the production facility, that it was called a winery nicknamed the Winery Picnic Bill. So at the winery, you could buy by the glass or bottle, and then that was extended in '09, effective January of this year, extended to what are called Type II duplicate licenses, are not the production facility, but remote from it, they're the tasting rooms, and that's what affected us. So they were able in '09 and this year, at the winery, to sell by the glass and out in the county.
Okay, thank you. My only comment, Steve, on, and I think it's following up on Councilmember Mueller's point, is the letter saying, here's the amended process, is not, there's a process, you can change it, it's a conditional use permit process.
Exactly. We will explain to them, and we will highlight the area that will be reviewed.
Be very careful what you ask for. Thank you.
Okay. Staff has sufficient direction. Good.
I don't get to say that often, but yeah, you guys do a good job.
Item 15, staff informational reports.
Just briefly, we have an item updating you on the progress of the Title 22 wastewater treatment plant, and we are nearing completion of that. We're waiting.
It's just a little hard to hear you.
Good night.
I always feel bad for the guys in the sewer, because nobody gives them their, you know, but here we are. The good news, exactly, I do, too. The good news is the wastewater treatment plant modernization project is nearing completion. Again, this is an informational item report, I'm not going to go into detail. We're currently under budget, and we're about to move into the phase where the electronic and controls will come in and get installed. So almost done and under budget.
Great. Item 16, council member meeting reports and comments, NCTPA. Who was, did you attend? Margie?
I did attend, and I really don't even remember the meeting now, I forgot to bring my notes. So, let's see, there was a confirmation that the nonstop bus routes all the way from Calistoga down to Bart have now been implemented, and I think that was a primary part of the discussion.
Good. How about WIC?
WIC canceled their meeting, but now that you mention that, Earth Day is coming up, April 12th, that will be 1 to 5, and it'll be in downtown Napa. We have a new venue, there'll be a lot of free trees that they'll give away, and a lot of stuff like that. I'll be working at the WIC booth, and so there'll be a lot of stuff, and this will be a good time, you know, if you want to get some local ideas for our global climate action plan, this will be a good place to come and visit some booths. So I encourage everyone to attend.
Good. Anybody else report, comments? Councilmember Chilton?
I'll just make a quick comment, that some discussions with the Napa Valley Unified School District have been continuing, and I would actually expect in the next month or two that we will probably bring something to the council for discussion related to that. That's forthcoming. I think there's progress, but, you know, nothing's done until it's even close to done, so we're not even close yet. I think there is progress, and they're working with us.
All right. Councilmember Dunn, any comments?
Just one, although we haven't had our meeting yet with Upper Valley, I think most people did receive probably in most recent publication from there, especially about April and Earth Day, but there was also a nice article here on food composting, and I'm working with Custia Bray quite closely, and hopefully bringing that here to more of the restaurants in Yountville. It's quite a program, and it has been very successful so far, but more to report on that later.
Good. Thank you. Vice Mayor, any reports, comments?
Yeah, just three quick ones. One, I just wanted to acknowledge the official opening, ribbon cutting of the library, was held on March 27th. Some of the board of supervisors were represented, Diane Dillon and some of the friends at the library, cut the ribbon, and it was a nice little reception that we had there in the morning. Also, if people haven't gone into the community center lately, the new emerging artist gallery is up to be seen. Another successful reception was held last week, and more art projects are in the works. The last thing I wanted to bring up is the census. I've been participating on the Complete Count Committee. It's been kind of the point person being Congressman Mike Thompson, along with some representatives from the Census Bureau, strongly encouraging everyone to fill out that census form. If people don't fill it out and mail it in, they're going to come knocking door to door, which will cost tens of millions of dollars to do, but they are going to be doing that. The information that's given is confidential, they want to stress that. They also want to stress that significant $400 billion in government money is distributed based on the numbers. So it's not just the number that you see out on the sign that says town population 32, whatever. It's really critical to our funding at the state and federal levels. The last thing I would mention is even, California could even lose or gain a congressional seat based on the population count. So it's really critical that people participate and do it in a timely manner. It'll be less expensive, and we'll be able to get the funds that we need to support the community. So if you haven't done it, please fill it out.
Thank you for those comments.
I'll ask you if I could, if they never received one. I noticed we had a breakfast Sunday, there was a number of people in Rancho Napa that never received a census, whole blocks. Is there a number they call or a contact that they can use, Vice Mayor?
I'm sure if they Google the Census Bureau-
Oh, okay.
If I can get in the next, do you have, or Town Hall, you would have a website or a phone number.
We have a contact with the Census Bureau.
There you go. Town staff coming through again.
Thank you.
I'm sure it's in here somewhere. If you'd like, I'll look.
Please.
Excellent.
No.
I only have one brief announcement. The Napa County Superior Court is forming their 2010-2011 grand jury, and as you know, the grand jury is referred to, commonly referred to, as the community, our community watchdog group, and they address a lot of issues. So anyone interesting serving on the grand jury, you can contact the court executive officer, Stephen Bausch, by calling 299-1110, or applications for the grand jury can be found on their website at www.napacourt.com. And the deadline for filing those applications is April 30th, so. Serve on the grand jury, it's an interesting process, it's quite an eye-opener.
I forgot to make one announcement I'd like to make. We, as a council, have agreed to wholeheartedly, but not financially, support FOIL. They are the group in town who is trying to, who is actually suing the county regarding the lot line adjustments, and they will be going to court on Tuesday, April 13th, at 8:00 a.m. And anybody who is in support of FOIL, they're asking for a good turnout to show the judge that FOIL is a real organization, there's lots of people there, and if they get added to the complaint, then they can possibly receive court costs if they win. So anybody who's a FOIL supporter out there, Old Courthouse, 8:00, Tuesday, April 13th. Thanks.
Good. Thank you for that information. Councilmember Dunn?
I guess one thing, I believe the next day is the ribbon cutting, if I'm not mistaken, for the bike path, April 14.
Is it still at noon, Graham?
Noon.
Item 17, future agenda items, Fire and Sheriff's Public Safety Quarterly Report, along with the County of Napa is going to do a presentation, Presentation Hope Center, Homeless Funding Program, and Farm Worker Centers, and the Town Council's Goals and Objectives Update will be on the next agenda. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Good night.